Mess on the counter. There's a mess in candy canes. Commissioner Cyphal, how are the babies doing?
Thank you for asking. They are doing well and eating and sleeping and doing all the things they're supposed to do. And that occasional little grin, you know, comes out. So we're very happy, but thank you for asking.
And I say in prayers. Are you guys still doing food distributions on Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we only have one more, though. Eight AM.
Okay.
Yeah, the last Friday. I've just been noted the last Friday, Representative.
Thank you. Marie and I have had Legislature University every single day.
Yes, we have.
Every day.
And I had a full day today, just like I had classes, so. And but it's okay, it's part of the job.
Yep. I've spent a lot of time in front of this computer.
I just left for me to City of Hollendale, so.
Sorry.
Come in.
You know.
All those people around? All right, it is six thirty. We're ready to start our meeting. Welcome to our meeting in December. And for all of you, happy holidays. And again, thank you for taking the time to listen to our meeting. So with that, can we call a meeting to order? City Clerk.
Good evening. Commissioner Castillo? Commissioner Castillo?
Here.
Commissioner Good?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schwartz? Commissioner Cyphal?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goren?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, both liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. All right. We have some presentations. First, I'd like to invite the newly elected Representative Marie Woodson from District 101. What a great sound that has, Representative. Go ahead and bring yourself into our meeting, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, all attendees. Representative Bartman as well, my colleague. It's a pleasure for me to be here with you this evening at your city meeting in order to formally introduce myself to you as the newly elected State Representative. I represent District 101, which encompasses part of Hollywood, Pembroke, Pines, Millmore, Hollendale, and the entire West Park and Pembroke Park. I'm here to let you know that I want the seat to work with you. This is your city, and I will contribute to whatever you are working on and what you're doing for the beautiful city of Pembroke Pines. I'm committed to do the best that I can. As I've told the voters, they elected me to do a job, and I have six cities in the district. I would not treat any city over any different than any other ones. They all make up the district, and I look forward to working with you for the betterment of the people of the city of Pembroke Pines. So I have met with your city manager, and I intend to meet with every single one of you to hear your concern or whatever you would want to discuss with me when I go to Tallahassee to fight for the voters. Again, thank you for having me. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. And again, you ran a great race, and congratulations. And we will work very closely with you. Thank you.
Mayor Ordus? Vice Mayor.
This is Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Let me just go over the rules again. If you want to speak, please identify yourself, because the mayor can't figure out who it is. So if you want to speak, just let me know who it is.
Schwartz.
Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. And you look very good this evening, Mayor. Doing a good job.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Schwartz.
There you go. Representative Woodson, thank you. Thank you for attending tonight. I look forward to having that phone call with you. Could you please let us know? Let our Pembroke Pines Charter family know where you stand on funding for municipal-owned and operated charter schools, please?
Say that again, I didn't hear what you said.
Can you let us know where you stand with the Pembroke Pines Charter School, Municipal- owned and operated charter school system? And will you be supporting funding for our charter school family?
Yes, definitely. My, when I ran for office, one thing that I told the voters, I support public school-funded education, because it's in the Constitution, and we owe it to the people to fight for better public system education. However, I understand parents have choice. I respect the parental choice, and I've listened Pembroke Pines has had a charter school for a long time. I look forward to getting more information, to talking to you more about it, and I would see when it comes in front of me, I would vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Woodson. And I just want to remind you, and I'm sure you know, we're the only state in the state, the only public charter school system in statute in the state of Florida. All right, Representative Bartman?
Yes, I'm very happy to be here. I present West Pembroke Pines, and I just want to thank the Commissioner and the Mayor and the City Manager. All of you have taken time to meet with me, and I've heard many of your concerns. Most importantly, after ETA and the flooding that occurred in our community. So I'd like to thank Commissioner Cyphal, Commissioner Castillo, Commissioner Schwartz, and the Mayor and Commissioner Good for meeting with me on that. You should know that I spent about three hours with Kevin Hart, who's the Executive Director of the South Broward Drainage District, to get a true understanding of what happened out here. I know there's still questions as to whether or not they could have lowered the C11 more to drain. I'm happy to say that he did go over multiple capital improvements that are going to occur that will impact West Pembroke Pines, including adding additional, I want to call it, she has a special name for it, but basically additional lines to drain the lakes. And I know there are issues with seepage at the very western part of Pembroke Pines. I've also met with Mr. Bergeron and the South Florida Water Management District to go over what was happening in the Everglades. And thank you for Commissioner Schwartz for going over the C9 and the C11 with me. So there is a project, a retained area that's currently in design. It's not fully funded, so I have an appointment with the Army Corps of Engineers to discuss that. I also want to thank Commissioner Good. He's speaking to me. I know you're going to be, you've discussed it already, correct, Tom? About the, about transportation and the costs for the, for the engineering of plans approved by the Department of Transportation? So I have an appointment with the Secretary of Transportation for our district to discuss that, because he gave complex information that we got from staff and others. So I am just really happy that we hit the ground running. I've had a positive relationship with all of you for many, many years. And you all do an amazing job representing your community. I also want to take this opportunity to thank staff. I've had the opportunity to work at the food distribution sites on Thursdays and Fridays, where everyone from Pembroke Pines comes out. You're the only municipality I know who's done that. And the residents of Pembroke Pines are very lucky to have this commission working for them. I don't know anyone else who's done it to the degree you have. So I want to thank you all very much. In the chat room, I put my email address and my cell phone number, so if anyone has any ideas, suggestions, questions, I'm looking for bill ideas, please be sure to reach out for me. And I look forward to working collaboratively with you, my colleague, Representative Woodson, who's also doing an amazing job. You're lucky you have two of us up there fighting for you. So we're very excited to be here, and we also look forward to any appropriation requests you have. It will be a very tight budget year. We have been told that you have to at least commit to 50% to put in your share to even get it on the table. But we want to hear what your needs are, and we're here to represent you. So thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Representative. Well done.
Thank you.
Mayor Cyphal?
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes, Mayor, if I could, I just want to sort of jump off a little bit on what Representative Bartman mentioned about the flooding and working with Kevin Hart. Mr. Dodge, please, if I don't have the correct date information, correct me on this. But as you know, I did have a district meeting where residents were to visit, you know, go virtual and get this presentation from John Cooper, our Utilities Director, as well as Kevin Hart. Unfortunately, some of the folks were not able to make the link and get in to be able to attend that meeting and ask their questions or get their information. So what we have done, and I want to thank Mr. Dodge and Marion Wallert and the group, they are the staff there that put together, they actually did the original, like the original presentation with Mr. Cooper and Mr. Hart, and did it as a video. And that will be going live, I believe, on the city's website. I think, Mr. Dodge, is it not Monday, December 21st, that it will be live? That any resident anywhere in the city that wants to view that and get that information, if perhaps they didn't, they weren't able to attend the meeting, or they couldn't, you know, hit the link and get in during the meeting. I know a lot of folks still had questions and wanted information. So that will be out there. And, Mr. Dodge, could you confirm, is that going live on Monday, the 21st?
Yes, that is true. December 21st, it'll be live on our website.
Okay, and I believe that that's going to remain on the website, visible to anyone. For how many days, Mr. Dodge?
Thirty days till January the 30th.
Oh, that's good. Okay, so that should be plenty of time for folks to be able to watch it and get the information that they needed if they weren't able to attend the meeting. So thank you, Mayor, for letting me bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Great job. All right, Mr. Goren, would you like to give us the rules of the road, please?
I would. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission. Welcome to Wednesday, December the 16th. As you know, the City Commission is currently operating under Emergency Ordinance Number 1952, which is adopted on the 18th day of November of this year, which came in place of the Governor's Executive Order Number 20-69, which, as you know, was the virtual meeting, virtual quorum executive order, which expired on November the 1st. In the interest of public health, safety, and welfare, the City Commission considered the facts and circumstances, and given the provisions provided for in Chapter 166, which is the Florida Municipal Home Rule Powers Act, Chapter 252 of the Florida statutes, which govern statewide emergencies, and the Governor's Executive Order 20-52, the City Commission adopted an emergency ordinance allowing for virtual meetings and virtual quorums, which is now before you in this format. You also adopted back in March of this year the Communications Media Technology Format, which provides a mechanism by which the public, who you embrace completely under state law, is made a part of this meeting. They have a right of access. They have a right of unfettered access, subject to the rules required of public speakers. Couple of items for the record to make sure people know how they can access the meeting. There's been a proper public notice of this meeting posted on the city's website and otherwise required by state law. To the extent that members of the public would choose to identify themselves and to call in, the call-in number for this evening, which is posted on the agenda and on the website, is 1-408-418-9388. For those who haven't gotten it down, it's 1-408-418-9388. And the access code for what's called, this is a WebEx, one of the various kinds of public access platforms. This is a WebEx platform. The access code for those who don't have it is 173-702-8367. People may comment, and they may actually submit comments via email. They also may do so by having their item read into the record. And the basis to do so is as follows. At the time of public input or an item to be heard specifically as a public hearing matter, comments submitted via email will be read into the record. There's a gentleman, his name is Jonathan Bonilla. You can't see him, but he's actually behind the curtain, working a lot of the details of how the meeting works. He will assist and coordinate with the city clerk to make sure that the public's access is unfettered and clear. There are members of the public who have pre-registered. There are some people actually have accessed the system via the WebEx platform. If you've done that and you're logged in, if you push star three to raise your hand, you'll be identified and told to then unmute your phone to comment on the item before the commission, whether it's a public hearing item or a public comment item. The person will be asked to identify themselves. Because we're operating in this pandemic environment, virtual environment, we ask that you do tell us your name and tell us your address, if you will, so we can at least have that on the record. And number three, the public who did not pre-register, and there's some people who did not, but have called in, you'll be identified by the area code and the first three numbers of your telephone number. So, for example, 954-849, etc. At the time, the call-in user will be unmuted by Mr. Bonilla, who you can't see, but he'll be controlling the method by which it's done, and asked to identify themselves by stating your first name and last name and your address as well. All public comments, whether they're given during the public comment section of our agenda or subject to a public hearing item, are limited to three minutes. I know the mayor is very judicious about providing extra time where someone's running over, but because of the nature of time and effort, he'll look at the issue very carefully. So, Mayor and Commission, that is the framework for the rules of the road this evening, govern the nature of public access, public presence, and the specific items of concern. As you know, and one thing if I may, if under any circumstance there is a technical or a digital breakdown of communication, the mayor has the prerogative, under the terms of the CMT procedures, to recess the meeting, allow our IT people to fix the problem, and come back on the record. So if, for some reason, there's a deficiency of some kind, there can be a brief recess to allow that to be fixed as appropriate and as needed. Because under any circumstance, the state of Florida Constitution and state law appreciates and certainly embraces the fact that the public has a right to be here. And but for the fact that we're in a pandemic in our country, in our world, there is an issue of getting people to come to the meeting, and this is the way to do it, and this is what works for the city of Pembroke Pines. Mayor and Commission, thank you for the indulgence. I appreciate the time and effort this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goren. I'm getting a couple of text messages that our online volume is very low. So tech people, if you could check that, please? Okay. I just got a note about Mr. Carr wants two other speakers to, wants to yield their time to him on item 25. We can do that. All right, so we can adjust that volume if it's possible? Items at the, and I, I pull from the agenda, City Clerk.
No items pulled, Mayor.
Items at the request of the public.
No items at the request of the public, but there are public comments on the items on the agenda that will be read at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Commissioner Good, announcement from you.
Why, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. So this is in regards to my board appointment. So I would like to promote Dr. Ram Tauri to the full membership of the Diversity and Heritage Advisory Board. He is currently an alternate member, but I would like for him to now become a full member. For most of us who know Dr. Tauri, he is a Pines resident for 32 years, which is highly commendable for him. He has a huge set of accomplishments. He is the public relations person for the South Florida Hindu Temple. He is a member of the Hindu American Foundation. He's a chapter president of the World Hindu Council of America. He's a registered professional engineer. He is, he is with the APWA. He does the lead work for them for their sustainability. He is also on their Diversity and Inclusion Committee with them. Amazing man, highly humble, a huge city volunteer, an asset that I am very, very much appreciative of and I respect. And I only wish that when I grew up, I could be like him. So I would like to welcome Dr. Ram Tauri to the full membership of the Diversity and Heritage Advisory Board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If he's online, I'd like to say something, that would be great. Otherwise, I know that he had made a written comment to this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. Dr. Tauri, are you on the line? All right.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mayor, if he's not online, I have his message that he wanted read into the record. Dear Commissioner Tom. Dear Commissioner Tom Good, thanks for your agenda item for my appointment to the Diversity and Heritage Advisory Board, December 16th, 2020, Commission meeting. I'm honored that you considered me and the worthy of this upgrade for an alternate member to a regular member. I do appreciate your kind consideration. So far, I've been attending as an alternate member of the Diversity and Heritage Advisory Board, and it was nice to meet and interact and discuss with other members of the board. Interesting discussions and suggestions to promote awareness and to celebrate the rich heritage and the vast diversity of the city of Pembroke Pines. I thank the City Commission for reviving this board and appointing talented members with diverse backgrounds. City Commission's commitment to the practical besides being fundamentally just. So many thanks and appreciation to you, City Commission. Regards and best wishes, Ram Tauri.
Thank you, Madam Clerk of the Court. And Commissioner Good, I tuned in to the meeting last night. Dr. Tauri did very well. All right, our consent agenda, item one to 24. Anybody have any pulls?
Commissioner Castillo pulls number three.
Any others?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Good?
I can hardly hear you, Commissioner Good, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I would like to pull item 12, item 16.
Hold on, hold on. You got to mark. 12, 16.
And 18.
All right, anybody else? Any other pull?
Commissioner, Mr. Good, you pulled the two I was going to pull. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Who is that? Who is that?
This is the City Manager Dodge.
You have to identify yourself, manager.
Sorry. Mayor, on item 18, there's one word missing to the motion, and it's the last word of that motion, the word annually should be added.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Good, you have that? Annually, okay. All right, any other pulls? All right, if not, I'll take a motion to approve items two, four, five, six.
Castillo moves.
Hold on, I didn't, I didn't say anything yet, hold on. I'll entertain a motion for items two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 17, 19, 20, 21, 20, 20, 19, I'm sorry, through 19. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, actually, through item 20, the disciple.
Item 20, you're absolute, you're absolute.
I'll move it, Schwartz.
All right, Vice Mayor Schwartz moves. The consent agenda, is there a second?
Second, Cyphal.
Commissioner Cyphal seconds the motion discussion. Here and then call the roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyphal?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Castillo, your item three, please.
This is a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Florida Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles FLHSMV and Pembroke Pines Police Department for access to biometric facial analysis system.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Good? Correct, Good? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you. This is a technology that the city of Pembroke Pines has used for a while. However, this item hasn't been before us in recent history since the issue with George Floyd in Minneapolis and other unfortunate events that haven't happened in Pembroke Pines, thankfully, because of the culture and commitment to diversity of our city and of our police department. Nonetheless, the research is rife that this technology is notoriously wrong and has resulted in many wrongful arrests, especially among people of color, African-Americans, Hispanics, and Native Americans in particular. It has gotten to where companies as notable as Microsoft, Amazon, and IBM have either benched their software in this area or discontinued it entirely. The appearance alone of something that could lead to racial profiling in Pembroke Pines is a serious concern, much less the actual danger of that happening. And in my view, while I'm a supporter of technology that captures behavior, technology that's designed to capture elements of a person's face. that's designed to capture elements of a person's face, even though the memorandum of understanding says that that would be used only as an investigative tool, the fact is that public trust would be strained in our city if we didn't at least do something to, in a very open and clear way, explain to the public how it is if we're going to use this tool, which we may very well decide not to. It will be used, and if it's going to be used, how it will be used in a way that would escape even reasonable suspicion of it being misused in our city. There, just Google false arrests using facial biometric technology, and you will see no shortage of cases. Some of them currently before the courts, being represented by the ACLU, of people who were wrongfully arrested because this technology simply does, is not accurate enough. And some police departments, perhaps even some officers, despite policy or with policy or however it is that it's worked out, have arrested people wrongfully. This is not information that was as well understood when the police department in Pembroke Pines first started using this technology. However, it is information we have available now. And when I saw the item, I felt compelled to bring it up because that's not been the history in our city. And so if I'm forced to vote on it tonight, I have to vote no. What I would rather do is defer it, allow the police department to explain to the authorities that are asking for this MOU that we're gonna do some public outreach on this. We can do webcasts, we can invite panelists to talk about it. I think we should learn a lot more about this technology, how it could be used, whether or not it's essential for us to use it, before we agree to enter into any of these agreements. And so Mayor, at the appropriate moment, I would like to make a motion to defer this item until we have the opportunity to possibly even workshop it amongst ourselves, but for certain, I would want this not to be handled as a consent item. The consent agenda being used for items that have no controversy, really where items on the agenda are placed which are ministerial in nature. This one is a highly controversial item, and it's become that. And I want to make this crystal clear, this is not a reflection on the Pembroke Pines Police Department. Many police departments are seeking to use this software, and if I was to trust any with it, it would be our own. That said, I think we owe disclosure and an open conversation with the public, given the experience that we've had nationally with this software. And hopefully, if there ever is an incident, we won't have to try to summon last minute in a failed way, as other cities have, in the middle of a crisis. The credibility, we will have already been upfront in disclosing and talking to people and having come to a conclusion, having understood all the facts, which I admit, I don't even have all of the facts on this. That's the other problem of it. Not all of the facts are in. So at the appropriate moment, I'm gonna make a motion to defer, but I know that there'll be other of my colleagues who will wish to speak on the item, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, afterwards for recognizing me for my motion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, this is Dodge.
Is anybody on the phone from the police department? Chief Shimpino on?
This is Chief Shimpino from the police department.
Chief Shimpino, do you have a comment?
Well, I can certainly take a few moments to explain exactly what this MOU covers and how it's directly related to the one that was passed one year ago with Pinellas County. If you would like me to go into some of what it covers, I can certainly do that.
Please.
Okay, so the number one thing for everyone to understand with this agreement is, we are already in an agreement with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, who runs this program. The only thing that has changed with the program is, one of the databases that a photograph would be compared against would be the Department of Motor Vehicles' driver's license photos. So the driver's license, Florida Department of Motor Vehicles has asked for just additional MOUs, which is what is before you tonight, to make sure that any agencies that use their data, which would be their photos, understand that they must comply with certain training, they must submit to audits, it can only be used for official law enforcement purposes, it does not compare against anything that's open source media. And all it does is provide a possible lead for a detective to then develop other evidence to support it. It would be no different than an eyewitness saying, I believe it is this person. We don't obviously go arrest people just based on that alone. We build a case. But for cases where, for example, you have a bank robbery, and there's a clear picture of them from surveillance video that would be able to be submitted to see, maybe this person will be a possible match, a possible lead from either a DL photo or a mugshot from a jail or similar, these are some possible returns the investigator would then have to compare to see if they even are close matches, and then build a case from there. So we are not looking to arrest anyone at all based on this one source of information. It is literally for cases where we have no other lead, and perhaps we can generate a lead that would then have to be substantiated. And as I stated earlier, the Department of Motor Vehicles, just as they have done with the use of people's emergency contact information, which you may or may not agree to submit when you get a driver's license, there are very, very strict rules on when that can be used and when it can't. And this is gonna follow the same methodology as that, with audits that are required, limited number of users, and of course, any cases that have a successful return have to be brought forth to them as well. That is literally all it does. It does not, we are not using cameras, we are not building a database, we are literally taking a quality picture of an unknown person in the hopes that maybe we can get a starting lead to solve a crime in Pembroke Pines, and that is all.
Thank you, Chief, for that interpretation clarification. Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Commissioner DeCipole?
Hold on, Mr. Dodge.
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor. No, I was gonna ask you to request the police chief respond.
Okay, thank you. All right, I heard Vice Mayor Schwartz first.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, good evening, how are you?
Very good, sir.
Thank you for the, thank you for the detail. Did I hear you right that this commission unanimously supported this technology a year ago?
I can't give you the vote, Commissioner, I just know that we, through Mr. Dodge, did execute the agreement in September of 19 with Pinellas County. So it definitely went before commission and was approved. I don't know the vote, though.
Mr. Dodge, if we can have the city clerk pull that, pull that transcript before the meeting is out tonight? I believe it must have been unanimous. It was probably on consent. Chief Shimpino, did anyone contact you prior to this live meeting to ask questions about this item tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner DeCipole?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question, perhaps City Manager would remember, when this item came up a year ago, were there questions, similar questions that were asked at the time, were there concerns that were brought up at that meeting when we initially looked at going in, you know, going into this?
Mr. Dodge?
Commissioner, I do not recall. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm not aware of it, or I do not remember.
Well, I think that would be important to know. I know Vice Mayor just asked for some information on the vote of the meeting. Perhaps we could also get some information as to whether there were questions that were asked at that meeting, and so were they the same kind of questions that were asked tonight? I think, you know, I think that this is an item that we all need to understand fully, and we all need to make sure that what we're asking for is exactly what we are requiring to happen, and that nothing goes askew on this, or nothing goes wonky, and I do appreciate the chief's explanation as to what it specifically is looking to do, but I want to make sure that if there were other questions that were asked last time, that we have fully answered those, and that there is a comfort level of what's happening here. So, Mr. Dodge, if we could, that would be great.
Chief Shimpino, are you aware of any questions? You might have been asked already, I'm sorry if you were.
I'm not aware of the specific questions. I believe when this item came up, one of my staff was here to answer those questions, so I do not have those, because I just wasn't present at that meeting.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yes, Castillo. I would like to make a motion to defer this item until such time as the City of Pembroke.
Hold on. City Clerk, you have?
Thank you, Mayor, if I may. This item was discussed on September 5th, 2019. Motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Sheriff of Pinellas County, Florida, and the Pembroke Pines Police Department, establishing a relationship which will grant access to Florida's facial recognition network hosted by the Pinellas County Sheriff. That was back in September 5th, 2019.
And was it passed?
Yes, it passed, 4 to 1.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Castillo?
Mayor, the point of clarification for the clerk?
Vice Mayor, go ahead, point of clarification.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, was the item on consent? In September of 19?
City Clerk?
It was agenda item 3, yes, it would be on consent.
Okay, is there, Madam Clerk, is there, can you please, if you see there, the maker of the motion, the second of the motion, please?
Whether from the item, a motion was made by Commissioner God, seconded by Commissioner Castillo to discuss the item prior to the vote. Commissioner God expressed his concern about the potential liability for misuse of facial recognition software. A motion carried by the following vote. Fair eyes, Judge Castillo, Schwartz, and DeCipole, on May, Good, Jr.
All right, thank you for that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very much. Just so that everyone remembers, not that anyone should forget, George Floyd died on May 25th, 2020, and the whole discussion about policing in the United States changed well after we had approved this item. I make a motion today to defer this item until the City of Pembroke Pines has the opportunity to workshop and call together a community meeting to discuss how they propose to use biometric facial software within the Pembroke Pines Police Department.
All right, the motion to defer, is there a second? Is there a second to defer?
Mayor, I'd just like to understand a little bit more about the basis.
Commissioner Good, I can't hear your mic at all. I'm so sorry. Can we fix Commissioner Good's mic? Anybody else having trouble hearing?
Mayor, point of order, I'm having difficulty hearing anybody's mic.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing too now. Commissioner Good, please?
I didn't understand the word the clerk said before.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Good, I can hear you now.
I just want to make sure I understand, I'm not opposed to deferral, but I didn't understand what the basis of the deferral would be.
The basis of referrals to have a community meeting to discuss this issue at length to make sure.
A workshop.
Or a workshop.
Okay.
No, both, both.
Mayor Schwartz?
Hold on, Commissioner Good still has the floor.
Yeah, so you're saying both, a workshop and a community meeting?
That's my motion.
Can we just do the workshop and then make a determination on a community meeting from the workshop?
That's not my motion.
All right, is there a second to the motion? Second to the motion to defer? Second to the motion to defer? Okay, motion failed? Anyone else on this item?
Yes, Mayor Schwartz.
Vice Mayor Schwartz, go ahead.
Mayor, one of our colleagues has a concern about this technology that he had supported nine months before George Floyd. There was a failed motion to have a workshop and a community meeting. The difficulty I'm having is our police chief, who I have the greatest amount of respect for, been here for over 25 years, just told us that the technology is only for driver's license pictures that are currently, that are currently on record. Chief, can you clarify if I misunderstood this in any way? And if I didn't, I don't know how a workshop or a community event would change what the chief just told us. It's only.
That motion failed, Vice Mayor, so we're on the main motion.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we've had some issues of late, Mayor, where this commission has conducted factual representations and legal testimony on the record, and then as soon as the meeting's over, we get a bunch of stuff out on social media that's twisting the actual record of what's occurring in the people's house. And I want to make sure that this transcript is abundantly clear. We have a state representative still on the line who's hearing that the City of Pembroke Pines has technology that we've been using now for, since September of 2019, and it's clear that if there's going to be any changes at FDLE, it's the state of Florida that's going to change that, not one municipality at a time. Because criminals like sexual predators and sexual offenders hurt our children in this city and cities all over Florida. And if this technology can prevent a six-year-old from being hurt, I'm gonna support that technology. So I want the chief to be abundantly clear with this elected body.
I think the chief gave a very good, on the record, interpretation of this item.
Point of information, Mayor, point of information. Thank you very much. I don't doubt a word that our good chief told us. However, the language that's in this MOU has been used in many places and in many states. And if you go to the internet, just do a Google search, using the words "false arrest" by using biometric facial recognition, you will see a plethora of cases, including many that are currently now being defended by the ACLU. You've got Microsoft, IBM, and Amazon refusing to participate in this facial technology anymore. It has been shown in studies to be notoriously inaccurate, in particular with people of color. This is a serious matter. It's not a political question that I'm bringing up, and I'm asking for a workshop so that we can understand it better, and then I'm asking for the opportunity to explain this to our public who we're supposed to serve, so that there's never a question as to how it is the police department is using this information, using their faces, their faces, in order to make police decisions. And I'm very, very sad that what I'm hearing is that there isn't a desire to do the due diligence. very, very sad that what I'm hearing is that there isn't a desire to do the due diligence that's necessary at this particular point in time, given the stakes that are involved, in order to protect our community better. All, all I'm asking for is a little bit of time and some meetings with people to show them respect. And I can't get my colleagues to do that. That's not what Pembroke Pines is doing. And it's a very sad day.
Commissioner Castillo, can you hear me? Your motion failed. Now, I'm getting text messages that the online volume is very, very low. Can I ask our experts to please see what they can do? I'm getting text after text that our online computer, uh, volume is low. Mr. Minnie, is there any way to check that? I'm sorry to disturb anybody, but I want everybody to hear our discussions.
Mayor, Cyple?
Hold on, hold on. I'm trying to solve this problem, Commissioner. Hold on.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, okay, we're, we're trying to find the problem here. All right, Commissioner, uh, Cyple.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, thank you, Mayor. I, I hope everybody can hear me. Um, I, I certainly hear, I certainly hear what my colleague's concerns are. And I think that, um, that they're not just his concerns. I think obviously they would be everybody's concerns that, that, um, uh, systems are not used incorrectly to, uh, to harm someone or to cause a problem for someone. My, my, my question would be though, and I guess perhaps this might be to Chief Chapano, um, I'd like to know if the way that Chief Chapano is proposing to use this system, as he was very clear about how we in Pembroke Pines would be using this system, was that the same way that it was used in other areas that, uh, my colleague has mentioned that had, um, less than better outcomes? We have to compare apples and apples. And I want to make sure that if we are looking at something that we, we are comparing apples and apples and the way, um, a system may be used. So Chief, could you shed any light on, on that question?
Okay, Chief, I'm going to ask you again because the colleagues are asking. Did you want to give another interpret, another dissertation on the question?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm not asking for another dissertation. I have a very specific question. It is the way that our chief is proposing to use-
I, 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 I understand, Commissioner. That's what I was asking.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Commissioner, the, the way that the Pembroke Pines Police Department has used this in the past, which granted has been for about the last year, is in, in extremely limited capacity where we have no other traditional means of developing the lead, but yet we do have a good image. So in, I, I want to say that in the last year, we've probably used this three times, or maybe three to 10 times. Um, and I don't know how these other jurisdictions are developing a case solely off of facial recognition. Um, I don't know if that's the issue that they are having, but all this is intended to do is develop the lead necessary for us to begin to start an investigation to determine if there's any other evidence at all that even supports this person. Were they in that place at that time? Do they have a vehicle that was in the area? Do, are, are these their, is this their DNA? Um, we don't have, in some cases, especially serious cases, this might be the only lead we have to even try to look at. But beyond that, most of our crimes are solved the traditional way. And this is just another tool that rightfully the Department of Motor Vehicles is, is doing a very good job of ensuring that it is only used, um, through this system with Pinellas County. And, and keep in mind, we are not the keepers of any of this. We are just a user that could send in requests that meet the criteria. And they are the keepers, Pinellas, of access to the Department of Motor Vehicles, which is clearly a big one, and about 270 other booking, um, jail facilities across the country for, um, to develop this database. But it is strictly for developing lead. Um, you know, our cases, without going through the whole legal process, we, we are not an agency that sends cases to and makes arrests without, um, an overwhelming amount of evidence to support it, um, and probable cause. So it'd be very limited. It is only under these strict rules that are established. It's all audited so that we will know immediately if there's anyone doing it for anything other than a proper investigation. And as of this date, it's been barely used. It's just another tool in the toolbox.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Cyple, clear?
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Further discussion, items?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd like to make, uh-
Commissioner Good.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to defer this, uh, to a workshop, which is a public meeting. So that's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion to defer to a workshop. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second.
Castillo, second.
All right. On the motion to defer to a workshop, city clerk, call the roll.
Mayor, I have a question. Cyple, I have a question of the maker.
Okay, Commissioner Cyple, please ask your question. Commissioner Good.
Thank, thank you. Uh, colleague, colleague Good, uh, your motion was to defer to a workshop, but will that be a, are you seeing that, you know, visioning that as a workshop of, um, just, uh, just a, a commission and staff? Or would you see that as a workshop where in fact, um, it would be opened, uh, I guess obviously virtually, but opened to, um, to the public, uh, and anyone who wished to, uh, join in and, uh, watch and/or, um, speak or have, you know, have some participation in the meeting?
Commissioner Good, that would be a workshop open to the public.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yes, that would be a workshop open to the public for public participation.
Boy, you're really breaking up, Commissioner Good. Can we fix that?
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Better.
All right.
I'm getting a, I'm getting a, a message that it's live on YouTube and it's good. So I don't know what's going on. Uh, Commissioner Good, did you have?
Yes, Commissioner Cyple, am I a, a bit clearer for you?
Yes.
Yes, would you, would you, would you restate, would you restate your motion to include that additional language though, please?
Sure. So I make a motion to defer this to a workshop with public participation.
All right. Is there a second?
Castillo seconds.
Commissioner Castillo seconds the motion. Discussion-
That's essentially my original work, um, uh, motion, but fine.
Is, is there any discussion on this motion to defer to a workshop, including the public?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to know what, what date, um, update, um, Commissioner Good, are we looking at January, are we looking at next, uh, August? When, when, when do you want to bring this in?
Commissioners, Vice Mayor Cy, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Schwartz, you're breaking up.
My question, when will this workshop be scheduled?
Commissioner Good, do you have that answer or?
I do not have a, the specific answer on that. I would like to defer that to the city manager to make that, um, schedule for us sooner than later.
All right. Further discussion?
Workshop without a representative. More information that we've already currently received this evening.
All right, Vice Mayor, the motion include the public.
Castillo, Mayor, if we could also in, uh, include, uh, an invitation to, um, the new state attorney and also to Gordon Weeks, uh, these are great sources of information on these matters and I'd like to have them included as well.
I'll defer to the maker of the motion.
Well, I'm going to invite them, so.
Okay, but it's, the motion is for the public to be invited. That, that settles that. All right.
Yes.
Further discussion on the motion. Hearing that. City clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Mayor, order?
Yes. Did you get that, Commissioner Cyple's answer?
Yes.
Okay. Motion for defer. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, may I ask for a privilege? Um, there may be, uh, several people here that are waiting for item number 26. I know that I received, um, several emails in regards to item number 26, and I was wondering if you would consider taking item 26 out of order and bringing it, bringing it forward now. So anybody who may be, uh, online or participating through the virtual, uh, can, uh, speak their piece and, and, um, and we allow them to have that opportunity to participate, uh, recognizing that this may be a very long meeting.
Okay, uh, without objection. All right, let's go and bring item 26 forward. Now, please, city clerk, read the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I will. This is the city attorney. Item number 26 is a motion, that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize. May I withdraw item 26? It is item 27. I'm sorry. It is 27. I apologize for that.
Correction, that's okay. Item 27. Go ahead, city clerk.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's for Commissioner Good's benefit. 2027 is item number one, discussion of possible action on approving the Lakeside Key, um, uh, Phase One Speed Hump waiver request to allow for Speed Hump installation, uh, and as, as described in the backup in the Green Book and also online. It's item 27, references 20 dash 0883 for Commissioner Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Good?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this item is to ask for my colleagues to support, uh, the waiver to allow the Speed Hump installation within Lakeside Key Phase One community. Uh, we had, uh, previously, uh, did this, uh, same approval for waivers for Lakeside Key Phase Two. Uh, this is the other half of the community. Uh, they have been working very, very hard, very diligently, uh, to obtain, uh, the, the critical items that needed to be, uh, done in order to be able to bring this item forward to this, uh, commission meeting. And so, uh, if any of the, uh, public is, is wanting to speak and/or, uh, have their, um, comments written to the record, I, I'd like for that to take place now, sir.
All right. Um, are you making a motion, Commissioner?
I make a motion to approve. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Second, Castillo.
Second by Commissioner Castillo. All right. Uh, are there people on the phone for item 20?
I actually had a question before we went to the public, Castillo, if you could, Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So we have, we have this, hold on one second. Ah, there it is. So we have this thing called the thousand-foot rule. And it was, uh, inserted into the original, um, uh, resolution that was changed shortly before my departure from the city, uh, Commissioner Dais. And, uh, I never quite understood it. And this item requires a waiver of that item, of, of that thousand feet. So I asked the city manager and the, uh, city engineer, what's the point of having the thousand feet? Do we not need it anymore? And, and, and the answer was, it's to the preference of the city commission. Now, I have to tell you, I never really got a, a square answer to why we had it in the resolution in the first place. Uh, however, uh, I also got an indication from the city engineer that in certain cases it might help with, uh, with drainage and in certain cases it might help with, uh, the stacking of cars. Uh, however, uh, it was our preference as to whether or not we had this item, uh, this thousand feet at all. So I, 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 I mentioned, I mentioned this for the good of the whole because maybe what we need to do is, uh, is further revamp the, uh, the, the Speed Hump thing and just get rid of the thousand feet. Uh, what, what, why should Commissioner Good have to bring a waiver to an item that's, that's our preference when we may not even support it and it may not be necessary?
City engineer, Kenny, are you on the line?
City engineer, Carl Kennedy?
City manager, do you have a, an answer to this?
Mr. Kennedy should be on the line.
I am. I'm sorry, I have my phone muted.
All right. Did you hear the question?
Carl Kennedy, city engineer.
Thank you. Did you hear the question?
Um, I wasn't sure if there was an actual question.
Yeah, it was about a thousand feet.
If you'd like an answer?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to repeat it briefly. You and I had an email exchange in which, uh, uh, we talked about, uh, the thousand-foot rule. And I asked you, shouldn't we just get rid of the thousand-foot rule if, if, if it's not needed? And your response was, it's, it's the commission's preference on whether they need it. But that you could see where in certain cases it might help with, uh, uh, with drainage or with other concerns. But it was basically our preference as to whether we got rid of it altogether. Now, Commissioner Good has had to go through the trouble of putting an item on this agenda because of this, uh, thousand-foot rule. So I wanted to make sure that you could reiterate on the record that from your perspective, it's a, it's a question of, of commission preference.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, the thousand-foot rule would, would be a commission preference. Um, uh, the, uh, speed humps require signage, uh, 125 feet on either side of it. So basically, uh, the, the minimum street length could be, uh, approximately 250 feet, uh, that I could put a speed hump. However, uh, it would be very likely that I, unlikely that I could put a speed hump on that street because I can't have it in front of driveways. I can't have it in front of, uh, drainage catch basin. I can't have it in front of, uh, uh, fire hydrant or on top of a manhole. So I'm kind of limited as to where I can put it. Um, so, uh, you know, anywhere between, say, 250 feet and a thousand foot, um, I, I, I could possibly put a speed hump, uh, on that roadway.
Well, we had this before, uh, city engineer, and that's why we put the thousand, uh, in there. So what are, what are you saying? We should keep it in or not?
Um, it, it would be a, a commission preference. I, I, I have no, I have no preference, uh, one way or the other.
Well, my preference would be to remove it then.
Hold on, hold on, Commissioner Good, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I think, uh, I think probably the best way to address this would be just to, you know, look at the entire policy or the entire, as we are calling it, a resolution. Uh, there have been some changes that have occurred between the Broward County Traffic Engineering and also with the MPO and what they call the complete streets. And there seems to be, uh, some, uh, room, uh, for the city, uh, city engineer to revisit, uh, some of these changes and maybe come back with a recommended change, uh, to the resolution that would be a little bit more, um, doable in some of these situations. So as, so it doesn't constantly have to be brought forward. Thank you.
City engineer, did you hear that?
I did. Um, I will, uh, review the, uh, resolution and, uh, put together some recommendations about possible changes to it.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Good, any further discussion?
No, Mr. Mayor, if you would, go to the public and thank you.
Are, are you entertaining a motion?
Uh, I'm, I, I made the motion and I believe it was seconded by Commissioner Castillo.
Correct.
Was the motion second? Okay. Let's go to the public. Item 27.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. All right. So, uh, just to, before we start with the public input, just to reiterate the rules of the game, uh, put in the chat the instructions as to how to raise your hand, uh, through the WebEx platform. And also, if you're calling in and would like to speak, please, uh, you can raise your hand by pressing star three to raise your hand. And then you will lower it as soon as you're done speaking by pressing again star three. Uh, the first public speaker, we have, uh, Natasha Floyd. I will unmute you. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, commissioners, uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the other representatives present. I appreciate this opportunity to get to speak with you on this, this issue that's been weighing on myself and my neighbors for quite some time. Um, my name is Natasha Godoy, and my address is 1011 Southwest 100th Terrace in Pembroke Pines 33025. Um, I, I have to tell you, I, I do appreciate, um, Commissioner Castillo's comments because it would have saved me a month of, of a lot of work and beating on doors, um, in the middle of a pandemic where you're not supposed to be in close proximity to strangers. But I have to tell you this- But I have to tell you, this was a real labor of love. I was a mom on a mission. And for every neighbor that I did knock on their door or get to speak with them in our subdivision, they were so enthusiastically supportive and excited that this issue was finally being addressed. Some of them have lived in this subdivision for years and many of them had stories of accidents. I believe some are waiting to have called in and are also appearing virtually and are waiting to share those stories with you. So in order to not shortchange them on time, I will be brief with my comments. But I do want to tell you a little bit about my motivation in getting the requisite number of waivers signed by my neighbors. So my husband and I have been in Lakeside Key Phase Two for about five years. And like most married couples that are just starting their families or expanding their families, part of the dream of homeownership for us was envisioning our children getting to play in the front yard, toss ball around in the lawn. And I can tell you that what the reality ended up being was that I can count on one hand the number of times that I actually do this with my children because of an incident that happened a couple of years back. My boys are six and four now. But a few years ago, my then-three-year-old was playing with his ball. And of course, inevitably, as it starts to drift towards the street and he's running to catch it and I'm racing to catch him, as I get to the street and I'm grabbing his shirt, within inches of our faces, our world filled with this black flash. And what that ended up being was a pickup truck that was speeding by. And of course, it didn't stop. It didn't even slow down to see if we were okay in the street. And it was without a doubt one of the scariest moments that I've had as a parent. And my blood just ran absolutely cold thinking about what would have happened if I had been a couple of seconds slower or if my son had been a couple of seconds faster. And I have no doubt that he would have been dead in the street that day. And so I just, I understand that the installation of these speed tables are not going to stop toddlers from being toddlers or kids from being kids. But it is at least a proactive step towards us making our streets safer the way that Phase Two was able to get approved and do last year. And we have noticed a significant difference with the speeding issues. For those not familiar with where we live, we are situated on Palm. We are closer to Pembroke Road but in between Palm and Pembroke. And the speeders that cut through our subdivision trying to avoid those streets has just increasingly gotten worse. And so what we are asking for... I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you'll just wrap it up. You've gone beyond three minutes. And there are other speakers.
Understood. Thank you so much, understood. My apologies. So what I would ask for the commission to approve is for us to have the same safety that Phase Two has and to allow the waiver of these speed tables and allow us to have our streets safer, our children and grandchildren. Because what we do not want, none of us want, is to live on, you know, Stephon Street or Julian Way, which are my children's names. Because this issue ends up being addressed on the backs of someone's child or grandchild being killed in the street when we know that there's an easier and more proactive way, which is what we're asking for you this evening. And that's to approve our waiver for the immediate install. So I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your call. Mr. Banille?
Sure, thank you. We currently don't have anybody else with their hands raised.
All right. Commissioner Good, you want to follow up?
Oh, we have one person, oh, we have a couple more that just raised their hand.
All right.
Sorry. Cynthia, I will go ahead and unmute you. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cynthia LaCount. And my address is 9891 Southwest 9th Court, Pembroke Pines 33025. And I went along with Natasha to get the necessary amount of signatures that we needed in order to install the Speed Humps. And this is due to an increased, again, amount of speeding, of traffic coming through or dirt bikes speeding through our community when, you know, we go on walks with our families or simply backing out of our driveways. So it's all to prevent any danger to anyone in the community so that we can all be safer where we live.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Banille?
Thank you, Mayor. The next person's Dr. Vanessa Gonzalez. I will unmute you. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Go ahead.
Dr. Vanessa Gonzalez, you've been unmuted.
All right, next speaker, Mr. Banille?
All right, Andrew, I will unmute you. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew LaPlant. I'm at 8810 Southwest 10th Street, Pembroke Pines 33025. I only need 20 seconds to speak. I got Speed Humps over in Honeywoods about two years ago. Bottom line is, Speed Humps work.
Excuse me, Andrew. Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. You seem, it seems very low. Can you please speak up into the microphone?
Is that better?
Yes.
I live over in Honeywood. I got Speed Humps approved about two years ago with Commissioner Tom Good. The bottom line is, Speed Humps work. There's been noticeable difference, and my block is noticeably safer. That's it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Banille?
Yes, sir, thank you. Adriana Colswell, I will unmute you. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lacyanna Saver. I live at 940 Southwest 98 Terrace, Pembroke Pines, Florida 33025. And I actually go outside with my three kids. And the neighbor comes out with her kids every day since the pandemic to get them out of the house. And we constantly have to either put cones in the middle of the street or stand in the middle of the street. And the cars still fly even when they see us there. There's a lot of cars flying in the neighborhood. And as the other person said, there's a lot of dirt bikes going through the neighborhood now as if they're on a racecourse. And even when you tell them to stop, they sometimes will slow down. But then you have to watch every corner that your kid is on. They can't ride their bike, they can't run, they can't play with the balls. It's a constant thing of the cars just flying in and out of the neighborhood. And I believe that the Speed Humps will make it much safer so that the kids can continue to play because a lot of them are still on e-learning and that's the only outside time that they get.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a calling number 9545, and the last two digits is 53. I will unmute your phone. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is... Yes, do you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Eric Spence. I'm at 10010 Southwest 11th Street. So I have similar issues. I have a six-year-old daughter. And right there, I'm right in front of Palm Avenue. So they just turn on 11th Street and it'll be speeding right down to the end of the road. It's even going to check the mail. It's ridiculous. Sometimes you have to be watching your back because these people are speeding on the road. So in discussion with our neighbors and so, we see that if you had a Speed Hump somewhere along that road, that it will, they will realize and know that they have to cut their speed. It will really help because our streets have so many kids growing up now. We have neighbors with newborns. We have a bunch of newborns on that street. My daughter is six, so I have a neighbor that is eight. And they try, we try to be out there with them. I bought a safety cone from home they put to put on the road. But even that, I think it helps some people notice it. But there are some people that just don't care. They'll see the cone and still speed. But if there was a Speed Hump that would do damage to the car, it would jerk them and they know that they need to slow down. I think that is what we need. So I really hope that after this meeting, we'll be able to push this so that we'll be able to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Banille?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that concludes our speakers.
All right, Commissioner Good, further comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that there were several comments that were written in as well. Do we need to read them in? Or can we just note how many people did participate through?
I think we're fine.
And we can make them a part of the public record, please? Yeah, so I just want to thank everybody for participating. This process started nearly a year ago with a fellow by the name of Anthony Pacheco, who I met within the community. He is the one who initially submitted the application and started the process. But it is Natasha that brought it home for everybody to allow this to be forward. I just want to say thank you very much to you all. And I do ask my colleagues to support this item as this community, as they have expressed clearly, desire these Speed Humps within their communities for the safety of their children and their family. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Good. If there's no further discussion, call the role. Please, City Clerk. Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz? My audience?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Good job, Commissioner Good.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, Commissioner Good, item 12.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 12 is a motion to approve execution of Amendment 5 to Sublease 2628-14 between the City of Pembroke Pines and the Florida Department of Children and Family for an extension to January 3, 2090.
Is there a second?
Second, Seiple.
Second by Commissioner Seiple. Commissioner Good, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I did call the city manager and told him that I would be pulling this item. And I asked for a formal presentation on this. This is a very, very important and a very long-term lease agreement between the city and another state agency. And there's a lot of great things that are going on within the O'Hara Foreman property. And I would very much appreciate the city manager sharing that with the public, the good things that are going to be coming at that corner of University and Pembroke Grove. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll permit, the City Attorney speaking.
City Attorney Goran, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This evening, Assistant City Attorney Michael Cirillo, who you may see on the screen, has had a long history with this particular project, as had myself. If you'll permit us just a few minutes of time, we'd like to put on the record some of the chronology and history of how we got from 1999 to the present and the wonderful things that have been happening and have accomplished out there. And with your permission, Mayor and Commissioner, Mike would like to give you a run-through of that information for the public record, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, may I proceed?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, good evening. Mike Cirillo, Assistant City Attorney. Just wanted to go through a chronology. This actually dates back to the end of the last century. In 1999, the city held discussions with the Department of Children and Families through then-Secretary Kate Kearney, who was also a former judge in Broward County. She reached out to the city to assume management control of the property, which was then referred to as the Florida State Hospital site. The property, just so everybody understands, is owned by the state of Florida. And it's managed by the Department of Children and Family Services, DCF, through a lease 2628 with the state of Florida. The entity with ownership control of the state lands is the Board of Trustees for the Internal Improvement Trust Fund of the state of Florida, which is comprised of the governor and the cabinet of the state of Florida. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection, who I'll refer to as DEP, oversees the management of state lands for the Board of Trustees. The property is approximately 174 acres. At the time when the city was discussing taking over management of the property, it included several uses that still remain on the site, which is the Florida State Hospital, the Department of Motor Vehicles, the driver's license office, a veterans' nursing home, a women's correctional facility, and the Broward County School Board bus depot. The property lacked proper maintenance for several years and contained dozens of dilapidated and rundown buildings, making it financially burdensome for the state to manage the property. At that time, the city entered into a letter of understanding with the DCF and the DEP in order to provide for due diligence for the city to inspect the property and for the parties to enter the appropriate lease documents that would provide for continued state ownership of the property while continuing to serve the public as a location for social health and public services. In March of 2001, with the assistance of former Pembroke Pines Mayor Ron Velela, who at the time worked in Tallahassee as a lobbyist, the city was able to enter into a sublease, Sublease 2628-14 for the property, which has a term of 50 years. The property, the city pays no rent to the DCF or to the state but is responsible for all maintenance and upkeep of the property. The city immediately began to actively manage the property, including working with the state on a master plan for the property to foster its development as a health park, consistent with the purposes DCF leased the property from the state. The initial master plan was developed in 2001 and approved by the DEP and DCF. It's been updated a couple times since with the most recent version approved in 2017. As part of the city's management and redevelopment of this property, the city worked with the DCF and DEP to gain approval to demolish several buildings that could not be rehabilitated. The remaining buildings were to be rehabilitated by entering the subleases with government and private entities who provide healthcare-related services. The city also undertook several significant projects on the property. All development and uses on the property must be consistent with the master plan and approved by both the DCF and the DEP. The city constructed the Pines Place Rental Housing Facility for senior and low-income housing, with Towers 1 and 2 being constructed in 2004 and '05, and Tower 3 being constructed in 2008. Pines Place contains 614 residential units and is managed by the city. Amendment number 3 to the sublease in 2008 confirmed the range of housing permitted in Pines Place. Note, Amendment 1 to the sublease was entered in 2002 related to insurance requirements for the buildings on the site and Amendment 2 in 2004 related to the legal description of the sublease premises. In 2006, the city constructed a facility currently known as the Village South, formerly known as Susan B. Anthony, to provide residential drug rehabilitation services to single mothers in an environment where the children can reside with them. The program is now managed by West Care Florida. The city rehabilitated five houses on the property, which is dedicated to rental to veterans. The city manages these properties. In 2010, the city constructed Studio 18, which are studios rented out to artists along with a gallery where the art can be displayed. The city manages this property. The city uses six buildings on the site for public works, the water department, and roads and grounds operation. The DCF approached the city in 2007 to operate a transitional independent living program and facility for children aging out of foster care on behalf of the Department of Children and Families. The city did so through an agreement with the DCF, which provided funding for the program and allowed the city to rehabilitate numerous buildings on the site, which were used as residences and for programming for the residents, for the participants. In 2016, the DCF advised the city that the program would no longer be funded by the state. The city then worked with the DCF to facilitate the transition of the program to a private not-for-profit entity, Browns Harbor, which could operate and fund the program. And thus, the program for the transitional independent living for these children who age out of foster care could continue on the site. The city agreed to manage the property as part of the Sublease 2628-14 with the DCF, which was Sublease Amendment Number Four, and entered into a sublease with Browns Harbor, which still operates the till at this location. In addition, there are currently several programs operating at buildings on the property, which have been rehabilitated by tenants through sub-subleases. These programs include residential mental health treatment and residential substance abuse recovery programs. There are currently two buildings available on the property, and there's approximately 25 acres of vacant land on the property, although some of which may not be developable. Again, all uses and development would need to be consistent with the master plan and approved by the DCF and DEP. In recent years, the city has been approached by entities DEP. In recent years, the city has been approached by entities interested in constructing facilities on the property to provide housing and/or services relating to healthcare. The city has also considered its own potential improvements of the property. However, there currently remains only approximately 31 years on the current term. In informal meetings with interested parties and limited review of potential grant and other funding opportunities for the city, longer terms are necessary for successful development and/or funding of potential projects on the site. In 2017, the city administration began discussions with the DCF and the DEP to extend the term of the sublease. While the prior governor administration was receptive and hosted meetings with the city in Tallahassee, they were not able to conclude an extension. More recently, under the current governor administration, the city re-engaged discussions with the DEP and DCF and was able to gain traction and support for the sublease extension on the agenda this evening. The agenda, the extension would again take the sublease term to January 3rd, 2090, which should provide sufficient term and length necessary for potential redevelopment on the site and to meet the requirements of some of the funding sources the city could pursue or in partnership with private not-for-profit or profit entities that would provide health and residential services consistent with the purpose of the project, of the property. And that's where we are tonight.
Thank you Mrs. Cirillo. I just want to thank everybody because this is such an important item. I've been around a while and I saw this property from nothing, dilapidated, until we started to get interest in it and take it over to what it is now. And this item before us is so important, so we can continue to keep the great building going on there and cleanliness and beauty and what needs to be done in this facility. So, thank you so much and I'm going to support this 100% Commissioner Good.
Mayor Castillo?
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. I agree with your comments. This is Pembroke Pines at its best. The Howard Foreman campus and the City of Pembroke Pines being the master developer, the master planner for these, for this facility, for these last, gosh, I guess it's 21 years, has been remarkable. From the Nenninger Center, which was the first time I ever stepped foot on that campus, to the Park Place, to the, every, every single amenity that's gone in there has, has been good for the community and it shows the heart that the city has. But it also has done much more. When this was the South Florida Psychiatric Center, there were many conflicts with the community. We have not had that in the management of this location. And it's been, it's been done because it's been done in the correct way. And I have to compliment the city manager and his staff, Jay Schechter and his team and others who participate, who have done an excellent job at running the location. I'm going to support the extension because it's necessary to, for the financing of additional affordable housing, additional programming on that site. And after all, that's what this campus is for. It is a human services campus. And so, I, I think it's a great idea. I'm thankful that the state has finally paid attention to the need for this, for this extended agreement and I'm going to support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Yeah, one other item. I sit, I sit on the board of the state hospital as a, as a representative from our city and they've been doing some great, great things. Commissioner Seifel?
Thank you Mayor. Thank you Mayor. Obviously, you know, this campus is, is a very special campus. I actually was with the Senator when they had the groundbreaking and the naming, the naming of the campus. And I think it was perfectly named. It's the Howard Foreman Human Services Campus. And what has come out of that was certainly Senator Foreman's vision for health and human services for, for everyone. That was, that was his, that was his, his, his goal was everything. And everything he did was working towards that through all of his career as an elected official. So I think that the campus was, was, excuse me, I think the campus was certainly correctly named and it has followed that name with all of the different programs that are really based on health and human services. It is a true compliment to, to Senator Foreman and certainly a compliment to the city for having followed with all of that, with all of that sort of protocol, if you will. So I am very much in favor of, and very understanding of the need to extend this contract so that we can continue with the space that is there to continue bringing in these different programs. But, you know, unless someone can have a guarantee of investing certain amounts of money into things and have a, an ability to have enough time to run the program, they're not going to want to do that. So it's very, very important that we, that we get this extension on, on this particular ask here. And, and so I do hope everyone will support that. And again, kudos, and I may be a little bit prejudiced, but kudos to Senator Howard Foreman for his many, many years of, of Health and Human Services endorsements. And now we have this beautiful campus out here to continue working and bringing, bringing things forward like that. So thank you. Thank you Mayor for the opportunity.
Thank you Commissioner Seifel. Further discussion, item 12.
Yes Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say a few closing words as well. So I, I thank very much Attorney Cirillo for providing us a very comprehensive history of how we got to where we are. It just goes to show that our city attorney's office has done a tremendous job putting these legal lease issues together so that it could be a success for us and the city manager to be able to execute on a vision. I will ask probably in the future for additional presentations and the next time if we could probably have some visuals that kind of give us an idea about what the, what the property and what the vision is going to be in the future. I would certainly love to be able to have Senator Foreman also participate, at least view some of those future presentations that we have so that we can see what his vision has turned out within the City of Pembroke Pines. So thank you very much Mr. Mayor for allowing me to pull this up.
Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk, call a roll please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Good, item 16.
Yes Mr. Mayor, item 16 is motion to authorize an industrial customer connection as required by Chapter 50.10 of the City's Code of Ordinance for the connection of building A Phase 1 of Vital Pharmaceuticals Incorporated DBA Bang Energy LLC, Bang Energy, located at 2030, or 2031 Sheridan Street.
Is there a second?
Second, Seifel.
Second by Commissioner Seifel. Go ahead Commissioner Good.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. So, so this item looks, you know, really attractive. You know, we have a industrial user who wants to come and do business in the City of Pembroke Pines. And they've occupied a, a facility out in the west in order to be able to do that. And of course, now they're asking for permission to access, you know, a very, very important resource for the city, which is water. So, my, my bigger concern on, on this is, I, I understand that there's a lot of moving parts here and I understand that they're not asking for the 1.3 million gallons a day that they've, are referencing in this item upfront. It's probably more like around 30,000 gallons a day at this point because they're starting out. But I, but it's important for me to show what this means to the City of Pembroke Pines as we move forward in the next couple of years. And so, i- is there an ability for me to share my screen? Okay, and...
Go ahead.
Just trying to see if I got the right one here. Is it showing on the screen?
Not yet. But you're, you're, you're there, but not the content. So, tell us what you're trying to do, maybe we can...
Yes, I, I received some information today from the city manager regarding the water treatment plant. And it shows historic and projection, projected water demands. It says I'm sharing one application. I don't know why it's not showing up. If you may, if I may get some assistance.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to see if Mr. Cooper can bring the document up that was forwarded to you? I'm not sure which page it is.
Mr. Manille?
Okay.
Got it on.
So I got some pecky help. Thank you. So, this, this chart here, if I may take a moment to explain and, and why is it important for us. So let's point to some of the colored lines and things. So we'll go to the blue dotted line. The blue dotted line is what is our current average daily flow. That means how many millions of gallons of water a day does our water treatment plant deliver to the Pembroke Pines community. And as you can see, we are currently right around, say, 13.3 million gallons a day. Okay? The, the next line is the red dotted line. And the red dotted line, it represents what is the average daily flow with future development that we expect. And so what we see here is that obviously it's going to be a little bit higher. And the projected, along with what we are currently doing, is going to take us about 3, 13.8 million gallons a day. The green line is the average daily flow of the future, of what we currently are doing today, what is the future project, projected for development, and then what is the impact with this contract with Bang Energy. And you can see that it takes us around 15.2 in 2021 and sort of, kind of goes up slightly and gets pretty close to maybe 15.4 million gallons a day. Alright, so let's keep that in mind for just a moment. So we're going to look at the straight lines here. And the straight line, the blue straight line here is what the water treatment plant is permitted to operate. So if, the maximum amount that our water treatment plant can produce, if all this water was available, is 18 million gallons a day. That's permitted by the state. The purple line is the South Florida Water Management District water use permit. That means how much water we are allowed to pull out of the ground today. Now that, that kind of goes until around, I believe, 2030 or, or maybe just a little bit longer than that. But the reality is, is that even though we have a, a plant operating capacity of, of 18 million, we cannot get any more than 15.6 million gallons a day. No more. The South Florida Water Management District says you cannot take anymore. And then the red line is if the, if 75% of the water treatment plant permitted capacity, so let's say something broke on the water plant, you know, those things happen and it reduces your amount to produce. And so the city has stated, well, what happens if 25% of my plant is inoperable? Then this is the level at which, you know, the amount of water that can be delivered. Now you can see already, just using the 75% operating capacity, we're sort of already not capable of providing service to our projected increase in demand. Certainly we couldn't provide it to Bang. But typically, when, how much, how often does that happen? Not often. So that's why, the focus is really going to be on the purple line. Because if everything's working great, no problems, this is the condition we have. And so we will not be able to, you know, we will, if everything is perfectly fine, the most we can deliver to this city is 15.6 million gallons a day. So why is that important? 1.3 million gallons of water, this difference here is equivalent to about, maybe about 3,800 homes. 3,800 homes. 1.3 million gallons serves 3,800 homes. And it's assuming that the homes are using 350 gallons a day, which is a lot of water. But still, that's conservative. So what does that mean for the city in future development? Things that we can't see right now. One of the things that, I don't know how many people have had an opportunity, but we do have an economic development plan. And that economic development plan does talk about the next round of development for the city. That's not captured here. And that next round of development for the city is talking about taking properties in, in, in areas that are, where you can, and assemble properties and to start increasing densities and going up. Doesn't stop some of the stuff that's on some of our major corridors. If some of these commercial developments no longer are there to be able to do things, we can probably expect that in the future on these corridors, they'll be considered transportation corridors or something like that where you have high density and you have great transportation services where you don't put cars, but you can put a lot of people on the street where there's transportation. And this, this South Florida is moving in that direction. We don't see it tomorrow, but it certainly is coming in the future. Alright, so having said all of that, the concern that I'm having is that, you know, executing on this contract, there is going to be probably at most, maybe 500,000 gallons available to give, to any remaining development or other type of businesses that may came in, come in. And it could get to a point of where there's only 200,000 gallons of water left. And so it really is limited because you could see without the, without the, the one company withdrawal of 1.3 million, there is a huge amount of opportunities that we would have with other, with other type of development or needs. Now, I can say that my concern, and I am very familiar with water allocations within the state of Florida, particularly within South Florida, and particularly with the South Florida Water Management District. South Florida Water Management District is not in a position, or nor do they have a tendency to increase water allocation. So if we're thinking, ah, well hey, let's just go ahead and get more water permitted from the South Florida Water Management District, which is this purple line, and try to move it up, that ain't happening. That ain't going to happen. It's already highly restrictive. It's highly competitive. We're not the only municipality in town looking for additional water. A lot of other people are doing the same thing and we're all drawing off the same water source. So future, there's going to be huge, huge challenge to be able to get additional water allocation. So for me, in this contract, I'm very, very concerned about what kind of burden that would put on the city, should the city in some future time need to really get an additional allocation of water. And so I know that there's agreement, that this agreement is, or this initial, this item in particular is just an initial phase of just getting additional water. I know that the city is working on some sort of agreement for the longer-term issue, which is the 1.3 million gallons eventually. But I want to bring it to my, my colleagues' attention that we cannot look at this lightly. We really need to understand what that agreement says. Who carries the burden if we have to create some sort of process that basically is, is to attempt to get more water from the South Florida Water Management District? Because, you know, is it possible? Yeah, I don't know. But it is a very expensive process. And I don't think that the citizens of this community should be carrying the cost of a burden because we made a decision like this today. So that's, those are my comments. And I'm not, I'm not going to deny this item tonight. That's not my intention tonight. My intention is though, clearly is to bring your attention to the real issue of what's going to happen to a resource that could become very scarce to us. And we've given a lion's share of it away. So we need to be very, very focused on how this process or how this, how these agreements move forward. And I will tell you that unless something in the agreement makes it very, makes, makes the city whole in that process, I, I won't be approving anything further than what's currently before. than what's currently before us today. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you allowing me the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Good, very well done. Uh, Mr. Cooper, are you on the line?
Good evening, this is John Cooper.
Yes, how are you? Commissioner Good gave a very good dissertation of the item. I'm in favor of this item. I think that the whole energy of it, of new residents and businesses in our city, that's what we've always strived for. Can you elaborate a little further on this issue regarding water?
Uh, yes, sir, certainly. Uh, but first I'd just like to say, uh, Commissioner Good, I'm, I'm glad you're on our team because that was an outstanding presentation of the situation and the how you explained the graph was perfect. And what I would like to just, uh, really reiterate, because he's already said it, is that the agreement, which is not signed, it must go before a commission for that, uh, is in its infancy stages and we are working with them on each item. And one of the items is who is going to pay for the, and I'll, I'll use another terminology that Commissioner Good did not use, but it's what he was referring to, the alternative water supply problem that is caused by the city giving away this water. So, uh, the commissioner has rightly said that essentially what's happening is yes, we have capacity, but the bad, uh, the negative of that is that we're giving away our future buffer and the buffer is the unknown. So what the agreement says now among money, many things is that, uh, the, the issue of how do we address the additional water that will be needed from the South Florida Water Management District via some means of alternative water supply and very lengthy and expensive process Commissioner Good referenced, how will we handle that? And that's not been, uh, resolved, it's, it's on the table, there are discussions, um, and, um, it's moving along, but that has not been resolved yet. So we have yet to do that.
Mayor Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, I will refer to the application which will not be named, which, uh, my colleagues who served, uh, back in two thousand eleven or twelve, I can't remember which, will remember, uh, uh, an applicant that was going to apply, that didn't apply and was going to use a lot of water, uh, out West. And I remembered the city engineer then telling us we had about enough water to, uh, to deal with their needs, but sooner or later we would, uh, need to apply for additional water or, uh, construction in, uh, or in redevelopment, which is pretty much the, uh, the growth, uh, horizon for the city of Pembroke Pines would have to stop. And so this is, this isn't new, uh, you know, if, if the capacity, uh, to draw more water is something that the city needs, it'll have to go through the process to do it. And we will either be successful in doing that and doing it in an environmentally friendly way or we won't. And the consequences will be the, uh, uh, the, uh, the, the growth, uh, horizon for, for, for the city. So I, I, I appreciate the presentation, this is something that we've known for quite some time. And, uh, uh, this particular user is going to absorb a, a, a fair amount of water, but they're, they're also going to provide us with a, uh, with a very healthy, uh, revenue stream that hopefully we can use to achieve some of the goals that, uh, the commission has long talked about, uh, uh, with respect to water and utilities. Uh, I look very forward to that. Uh, I think that would be a great thing. And more importantly for me, I, I look forward to, uh, uh, to drinking Bang with delicious, uh, made with delicious Pembroke Pines water, I think that's fantastic. So, uh, thank you very much for the, uh, opportunity and I look forward to supporting the item. Thanks.
Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I have, um, I have two questions, uh, I have three questions actually, um, so, and I believe that, uh, my questions are directed at the city attorney. Um, the first question would be city attorney, does this agreement in, in any way give, uh, that, that corporation, I forget their exact name, the, um, vital pharmaceutical thing doing DBA betting energy, does this agreement in any way give that entity any control over, over our water, um, how we handle water, how we process water, uh, anything like that? Is there any, any language in this co, in this, uh, agreement that, uh, would give them that authority?
Mayor, respond, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney.
I'll give you the short answer, Commissioner, the, the answer is no. Um, this is a phased relationship, as you've heard from, um, Commissioner Good, obviously, but also for Mr. Cooper. Um, the, the ultimate agreement, which our code requires in order to actually sell the water, uh, in some form or fashion, uh, will have and has, has contained in its proposal a, a number of, of moving parts and component parts, all of which are geared towards making the city of Pembroke Pines whole and making sure that there are factors within the agreement that would, um, make sure that we know that if there are future obligations with other permitting agencies, that the costs and expense of dealing with those agencies are paid for by, by, by the Bang people themselves. I know Mr. Dickerson, uh, is on the line, uh, as counsel for Bang. There is a document currently in process for review, uh, which is a future committed obligation, that, that agreement, uh, it will be the operative document to come back to the commission for approval. Uh, what today actually does is gives them a placeholder under the code, uh, for future access, subject to, clearly subject to the entering into, entering into that agreement. And just as a matter of a side note, without getting into any abrasion for any one of us, uh, this property is in the city of Pembroke Pines and is a, would be a city customer, uh, not outside the boundaries of the city of Pembroke Pines, which I think is a key factor. And, and the items that we're describing this evening and which are on the record being reviewed have also been reviewed by Bruce Johnson, our special counsel regarding the other matter which need not be discussed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney, and that was, that was a statement that I was going to, to reference also is what was referenced earlier, uh, it's not apples and apples, we're talking about something totally different, uh, city boundaries as opposed to non-city boundaries and inside city boundary obligations which don't exist outside city boundaries.
This is, this is apples and diners, correct.
Okay. Um, does, uh, city attorney again, does agreeing to this first phase one, I guess is what we're, what we're calling this, phase one, does agreeing tonight to this phase one obligate us to going further up to the one point three million?
No, it does not. It don't, it opens the door for discussion and under the code there would be a required agreement that has yet to be struck between the parties. It is not yet in a perfected form that can be sent to the commission nor is there a need to have it, but at some future moment the commission will, will be able to consider it with all the component parts, the engineering concepts and the obligations that relate to cost expense and other matters which will be projected to the applicant and not to the city.
Okay. And then is there any language in this agreement that covers the city's, um, obligation, I guess if you will, if water becomes scarce? That's kind of a broad question, but I hope, I hope you understand what I'm asking.
I do, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, to the commissioner, uh, this is a topic which I know, I know Mr. Cooper has focused in on during his review. It may be helpful to do two things if I can quickly offer, one of which is to consult Mr. Cooper on the specific, uh, operational question, which is a serious one, and also to have applicants' counsel represent to you, Commissioner and the mayor and commission, what the expectations are under this first phase request under the city code. Just to have those both on the record might be very useful for all of us.
So my question to you, um, that I just asked you, if, if this agreement covers, uh, any language, it covers the city's obligation if water becomes scarce, you're saying that Mr. Cooper should be giving an answer on that?
He can.
Okay, could I ask that question?
Yeah, and, and also counsel as well to Mr. Dickerson.
Mr. Cooper?
Good evening again, Commissioner Seifel. And, uh, your question, um, if I understand it correctly is, is does this agreement in any way, um, obligate or cause any issue related to, uh, water scarcity or water supply for our city? Is that the question?
Yeah, my, my question was, is, is there any language in this agreement that would cover the city's obligation if water is scarce and we have to go, uh, we would have to go elsewhere to, to find, find water? In other words, would that be, if that, if that, hopefully not, but if that ever became the case, are we as the city financially, is there language that says we as the city would be financially responsible to find that other water or does this corporation have some, is there language that says this corporation may have some obligation to help find additional water?
Um, I honestly don't think it, that is addressed in the agreement. And first of all, to be clear, you're, you and I are referring to the agreement that is forthcoming, not the item tonight.
Correct.
Also tonight's item.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I, I do not, uh, believe that any such clause exists in the agreement.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. That's all, Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right. Further discussion on item sixteen.
Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll be brief, Mayor. Um, through the matter, uh, Mr. Cooper, uh, refresh my memory, I think less than two years ago you brought, uh, you brought this, uh, water capacity item to the commission. We had probably no less than a half hour discussion on it, uh, when, uh, we had the opportunity to, uh, to bring, um, uh, this, this project to the city. Am I, am I correct?
Uh, Commissioner Schwartz, good evening. Uh, yes, we had a discussion, it centered around my request for a, a water treatment plant modification.
Right.
Contract, uh, and the idea that I brought forth was I was, I was starting to anticipate needing to plan for certain improvements because the water plant is not a switch, they just flip the switch and say, put out another one point three million. You know, it takes a bit of effort to make the plant do that. And we were looking at problems, uh, that we have and how can we solve them? And one of them was put forth before you, which you agreed to. And at that time you asked, uh, you and the others asked questions about the possibility of how much water was going to be requested. And at the time it was very much a guess, uh, and we had a short discussion about that.
Right, and that was, I, I think it was fiscal, uh, budget eighteen, nineteen discussions, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Yeah, and, and I, and, and if, if we were to pull the, uh, your comments that, that evening, it was a million gallons, is, is what you had said. Um, and the five of us all heard the same information and now there's a potential one point three, so it's not that far off. So this, this really isn't a new discussion. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cooper. The, the other thing that's not new, uh, is my memory on why I even got involved in, um, running for office, and that was June the twenty-sixth of two thousand eleven. You can circle that date because that was the outside border discussion that we're not going to talk about tonight. So for, for, for anyone on this dais to say, I don't know if it was tw- two thousand eleven or twelve, I can tell you it's over four million dollars in legal bills that were caused by that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Further discussion on item sixteen. Hearing them call the roll, city clerk, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Orden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you. Next up, mayor and commissioner is number eighteen, that's Commissioner Good's item, I believe.
Uh, you are correct. Commissioner Good on item eighteen. With the language that the city manager said we should include. Go ahead, Commissioner Good.
I can read if you like, whatever you prefer, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I'm going to leave it up to Commissioner Good.
No, I, I, city attorney can read, I'm still looking.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Item number eighteen, which is referenced to the record is twenty dash zero nine zero four's a motion to approve the second amendment to the contractual services agreement between the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida and FPI Security Services Incorporated to enter into the second renewal term as allowed by the agreement in an amount not to exceed seven, not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars annually. In the record is on item eighteen, references twenty dash zero nine zero four on the floor. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner for Commissioner Good's item.
Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I don't have any comments, I'm just, I'm ready to vote.
All right. Discussion, city clerk, call a roll, please.
Seifel?
Seconded.
Commissioner Seifel, you have a question?
I do, Mayor, a quick question for city attorney.
Go ahead.
City attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
I, I usually, I usually ask you this question, I'm going to ask you again, is there language in this, um, contract terminate for convenience clause?
There is.
There is?
There is.
Okay, thank you.
We, we have some recent experience in that regard, so the answer is yes.
That's a good thing to have in contract.
Yes, Mayor.
All right. City clerk?
Mayor, may I ask who seconded the motion?
Uh, Commissioner Good made the motion.
I'll second, Mayor, if you like.
All right, Vice Mayor, second.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Sorry, I can't, um, the microphones are cutting out, uh, I didn't hear Vice Mayor, uh, Commissioner Good's vote.
No. Okay, Vice Mayor, you're up.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Orden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, what was, what was the total on that vote? I, I did, I still didn't hear Commissioner Good's vote.
Commissioner.
Four one, thank you, Mayor.
Let's go to ordinances and resolution, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, this Dodge. Mr. Mayor? Uh, prior to going into the regular meeting, we had one addendum item that our principals are on the line, been waiting all night. It's addendum one for discussion and possible action to adopt the Pembroke Pines Charter School Spring twenty twenty twenty-one education plan. This is required of us. Um, uh, out of due caution, we would like the, uh, commission to approve this plan.
Commissioner. Let's go to item addendum one, Commissioner Castillo has my motion seconded by Commissioner Seifel, discussion, addendum one. Hearing them, call a roll, please.
Mayor Orden?
No, 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 no.
Oh, who, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Seifel made the motion and, uh, uh, Commissioner Castillo seconded.
Okay, I apologize, Mayor. Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Orden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you for all sitting in through all of that, sorry. All right, let's go right to our ordinances and resolution, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item twenty-one is a proposed ordinance, number twenty twenty seventeen, is an ordinance of the city Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter one fifty-five entitled zoning code by amending section one five five point zero eighty-two entitled electric vehicle charging station to amend section one five five point zero eight-two subsection A to provide for electronic vehicle charging classifications, to amend section one five five point oh eight-two B to modify the definitions of operator, to add electric vehicle charging kiosk owner, to amend section one fifty-five point zero eighty-two subsection D to clarify the type of electric vehicle charging stations considered for accessory use and for level two and three, to further update signage allowed and to provide for the screening of equipment necessary to an electric vehicle charging station, to add section one fifty-five point zero eighty-two subsection G, to encourage residential electrical vehicle charging. necessary to an electric vehicle charging station, to add section one fifty five point zero eighty-two subsection G to encourage residential electrical vehicle charging infrastructure, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and finally providing for an effective date. Item twenty one, reference for the record is twenty twenty dash seventeen, on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Thank you. Need a motion? Motion by Commissioner Seifel, there a second? There a second?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Vice Mayor Schwartz, second for motion, discussion, item.
Commissioner Castillo?
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead for discussion.
Commissioner Good, I believe this was your item. Is, am I, am I mistaken? Wasn't this, wasn't this an item that Commissioner Good brought forward?
Mayor, and Mike Stan, can I interrupt?
Mr. Stan?
Uh, Commissioner Castillo, this item was brought forward by Pembroke Lakes Mall and their council, Miss Loda.
Oh, I see what you, I I see, okay, all right, I got it, I got it. Thank you, my bad, got you.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make sure the right guy got the credit, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Go ahead, City Clerk.
You know I'm that way.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. The permanent record for the, uh, the permanent number for the record for number twenty one is nineteen fifty-four, one nine five four.
Thank you. Resolutions, item twenty-two, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Number twenty-two is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty R fifty-two, which is referenced as a mobility hub planning design and implementation sec- uh, two. Proposed resolution twenty twenty R fifty-two is a resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida endorsing the recommendations of the Pembroke Pines Mobility Hub Master Plan and supporting the efforts of the Broward Metropolitan Planning Organization, that's the NPO, to prepare the recommended capital improvements for Federal Transit Administration, that's FTA funding, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and finally providing for an effective date. This is item number twenty-two, twenty twenty dash R fifty-two, on the floor for consideration, Mayor and Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there a motion for item twenty-two?
Some move.
Commissioner Good, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Seifel. Commissioner Seifel, this is a very, very important motion for funding from the federal government. And uh, we, in my opinion, is a very, very good item, and it needs to be passed. Discussion. Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Dodge, are you there?
Mr. Dodge?
Yes, I am.
I I want to make sure that this vote no way, shape, or form uh, endorses the horrible bridge programs that uh, are planned for on on Vice Bowl.
Let me interrupt you, Commissioner Castillo. The item is the item, says it right there, Federal Transportation Administration funding.
I wasn't asking, Mayor, I was asking the city manager whether or not my vote would in any way shape or form endorse those.
Uh, Mr. Dodge, would you tell the commissioner, it's a relevant question?
The answer is no.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Okay, Commissioner, uh, City Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordin?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
The permanent number for the record on this resolution is number thirty-seven twenty-seven. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Thank you. City Clerk, items twenty-three.
Twenty-three, Mayor and Commission, is an item on the regular agenda. It's a discussion and possible action on dissolving the City of Pembroke Pines Veterans Memorial Foundation, Incorporated, the background of which is on the on the website, is also in the green book, and there are several options for the Mayor and Commission to consider referencing the dissolution or not.
Okay, uh, we need a motion to dissolve the City of Pembroke Pines Veterans Memorial Foundation, Inc. for the reasons stated, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before we make that motion.
Commissioner Good?
This is just a discussion item for, before we make that.
Go ahead.
I mean, so I I I read this, and I I feel a little distressed with this.
Yep.
Um, and I I don't know what efforts were done in order to um, you know, to get some other people to um, participate. I I I see the the members that 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 were participating, and two of them have, you know, chosen to uh, relinquish their duties and 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 another is is uh, is no longer with us and hopefully is in peace. Um, I uh, I would like to have an opportunity to at least query some of my constituencies to see if they would be interested in in continuing this program. Um, I I would like, I would I would not feel comfortable uh, voting this um, dissolution without at least having that opportunity to reach out to the community to see if there's other people that would uh, step in these roles and and turn this program into a success.
Okay, uh, fair enough. And again, this was a ongoing effort to fund that memorial. My name and Barbara's name is right up on the front brick. And we would hope everybody would, you know, do that as well. Mr. Dodge, you have any comment?
Commissioner Seifel?
Uh, Mayor, no, I don't have any at this time. If the question is deferred, look for new members, certainly we can uh, uh, wait and do that, there's no rush.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes, Mayor, um, I I I felt the same thing that I think my colleague, uh, Commissioner Good said, a little bit of um, almost kind of sadness when I read this, that um, you know, that this uh, may may dissolve and be be no more when it should be such a very um, viable and and ongoing um, uh, uh, group. So I I would like to, if we could um, have an opportunity to sort of reach out into, you know, into our different communities um, and just see what kind of, I mean, there's no rush to to do this. I don't, I don't see a rush to do this. But uh, to reach out into um, our different communities and see if in fact we can't um, you know, find some interest of folks that want to continue uh, and and perhaps even grow it into something more than what it was. Uh, the bricks are beautiful, I think, I think Mark and I purchased, you know, three or four for our family members as well and and uh, um, but you know, even to grow it into something else. Uh, we spent an awful lot of time in this city talking about how we honor and take care of our veterans and recognize what they do. So I think, I think the word dissolving this Veterans Memorial Foundation um, really kind of struck a bad nerve with me. So um, I'm I'm hoping, Mayor, that we we can go forward with just buying a little more time and 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 all of us putting together some effort to see if we can't keep this moving in a positive direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I think it's. I I think it's a good uh, thing that you bring up, and some people just that we're working it have gone away. But uh, I would certainly like us to keep it going if we could possibly, Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, I'm 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 very pleased with the uh, with the uh, reactions that I've had from my colleagues. Uh, I too agree that uh, uh, we should find a way to keep this thing going and see whether or not we can get people to do, to continue to donate and to assist us with these efforts. It's more than just uh, uh, honoring the veterans, though that reason alone would would suffice. Uh, as this city matures, it needs to get a sense of of how to handle public statuary. And one of the ways to do that is through these these types of of foundations and and funds and organizations. And so I very much support finding a way to reinvigorate uh, and use this not as an opportunity to close it down, but to reinvigorate it. And I'll play any role that I can in helping to make that happen, so thank you.
All right, if I have consensus, could we say that we want to try and reach out and keep this going? I got that consensus?
Vice Mayor Schwartz, Mayor?
Do you, do you agree or not?
Uh, Vice Mayor Schwartz, Mayor, I agree with you, I just have a question for the City Attorney.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, City Attorney, uh, how is this any different from um, the Charter School Foundation? That the city, that the city effectively is running?
Mayor's bond, Mayor and Commission? Thank you. To the Vice Mayor, th- this is a a Florida nonprofit corporation, so they are very similar legally in that regard. Uh, the only difference is here is is the situation of the the original membership. Um, and to that extent, that's that's certainly something which is in your control. Um, and to the extent possible, the corporation continues as a nonprofit Florida corporation. The options that we provided were simply um, the legal options. How you would handle it is certainly the business of the commission. Uh, we had no recommendations to what what action to take, but in the context of of management of the organization, uh, with the limitation of members and with um, of the absence of members, it becomes a bit more difficult to to manage.
No, I I understand, City Attorney, I'm just, I'm just wondering if um, I I know that the the foundation started with the blessings of all of us. It is a legal entity, they do have, you know, they have business that, you know, if you if you've got officers that no longer want to participate, my question is, is could this commission um, I guess through ordinance, maybe?
Well.
Uh, assign city manager, uh, finance director, uh, uh, director of recreation as officers so that we can, so we can inject the uh, the vibrancy that we need, the support. Um, I mean, volunteers are great, uh, but I know that with with the success and the energy that we've had with with our Charter School Foundation and the and the resources behind that, I'm just thinking that we could, we could do better by bringing this in-house and giving the manager an opportunity to maybe even look at uh, other folks uh, other than himself to 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 do it, but just just along those lines, is that, is that something that's possible?
Mayor's response is.
All right, Mr. Manager, you're hearing the commission. Uh, we want to continue this, we're gonna leave it up to you to be the catalyst to form it so it's successful once again, okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, but I'd like to just make one distinction. The Charter School Foundation is not a a function of the city per se, it's independent, although there, and the makeup of that foundation was set up outside uh, the government of the city. But the makeup are are made up of teachers, principals, myself, and other staff members. So it's a little different from this foundation that was established by the commission. So I'll have to defer to the City Attorney as to the makeup, as to the board members on that. I thought I recall they were all you as the members of the City Commission. So we'll have to revisit that, and I will speak to the City Attorney regarding that item.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, let's go to item twenty-four, please.
Mayor, this is Seifel, Mayor, Seifel?
Yes?
Yes, Mayor, um, I just saw on on the chat, some gentleman had sent me a chat, and I don't know if the rest of you have received it also, just from hearing the conversation tonight, is a resident who would like to uh, get, you know, get uh, get interested in this and and be able to help out. So I certainly think that if we just get the word out there that we're gonna find a whole lot of people that are very interested in 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 offering and and taking care of this um, this.
We're gonna let the City Manager be the catalyst on that.
This this gentleman happens to be a U.S. Army Sergeant Major retired, and he's very interested in in. So thank you, Mayor.
Item twenty-four, City uh, Man, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Twenty-four is referenced as follows, is discussion and possible action to combine the regular commission meetings in January twenty twenty-one to the Wednesday meeting on January thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. It's referenced for the record as twenty dash zero nine one two, item twenty-four.
Some move, Schwartz.
Is there a motion? Move by? I need a motion?
Some move, Schwartz.
Vice Mayor Schwartz makes the motion, is there a second?
Second, Seifel?
Commissioner Seifel seconds the motion. Discussion.
He has a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Why are we doing this? What's wrong with uh, meeting on the sixth and the uh, what is it, the uh, the sixteenth? What's the problem?
Mr. Dodge?
Uh, this was an item that was uh, discussed at the prior meeting suggested by a member of the commission.
Well, I can only tell you, I can only tell you that in the past, whether it's a vacation or whether we had special meetings in June or July or whatever, I called from wherever I was. And now we have the ability to use this uh, this technology. Why would we burden staff and take and take the opportunity away from uh, from residents? Uh, we we really only meet twenty-four times a year unless there's an emergency or a workshop. I just don't see the point unless there's a very good reason stated on the record to cancel a meeting. What is the reason?
All right, further discussion on item twenty-four. Hearing none, City Clerk, call a roll.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel? Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, City Attorney, twenty-five.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Twenty-five is for the record a motion to approve the Ninth Amendment to the agreement between Calvin Giordano and Associates Incorporated and the City Pembroke Pines for building services for a five-year period beginning on July one, twenty twenty-one, with two additional three-year renewals instead of annual renewals. On the record is item number twenty-five, and for the record, twenty dash zero seven one one online. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Castillo moves for approval.
All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Castillo for approval, is there a second?
Seifel?
Commissioner Seifel seconds the motion. I know we have quite a few that want to speak on this motion, Mr. Benioff?
Mayor, I'd like to speak, um.
First, I'm sorry, first, any Commissioners like to speak on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to answer just a few questions myself.
All right, Commissioner Good, could you get closer to the mic?
Castillo will also have comments.
I um, I have uh, several. I I just want to ask regarding, in in past conversations with this, um, I I asked um, the revenues that we receive for for these services, uh, our share, our revenue share, um, I asked if we had, where does that money go? And the answer was that it went into the general fund. So I just want to ask a very simple question, and and that is, is there a separate accounting of these funds that are um, in compliance with Florida statutes five fifty-three point eight zero?
City Attorney?
If I may respond, we we've looked at the statute, and we believe after reviewing the statute and the structure of the transaction with Calvin Giordano, that we are in compliance with the with the with the statute as as prescribed. Uh, in fact, as you know, there was a bill passed in recent uh, recent times that requires an annual filing. It's a report, that report will need to be filed by Calvin Giordano as the city's principal provider. There are a number of component parts to it that need to be addressed, um, and to that extent will be addressed and filed timely as required by the statute. Um, and we believe based upon our review of chapter five fifty-three and in consultation with principals from Calvin Giordano and the city's Administration and Finance Department, that there will be full compliance with the law as as it applies to this transactional relationship with CGA.
And the reason why I ask that question is that first, I will, um, I'm making that request tonight to the city manager to have the last five years of accounting uh, for that uh, particular revenue stream. And the reason why I ask for that, and again, I just want to make certain, is that, Mr. Manager, did you catch that request?
I did, Commissioner. I did.
Thank you. So the reason why I ask that is because um, for my colleagues who may not be familiar with that particular statute, um, state statute makes it very clear that any monies that are generated through permit fees, which is where we get our revenue share, must only be used to cover the cost of building code enforcement, of which what the building services does. And why is that important? Um, it's important because if 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 some of these funds are being. It's important because if some of these funds are being utilized to support general fund items, it may be artificially inflating the permit fees that our constituents and order developers are paying. So it's a very important thing. Most of our constituents won't know this. So we need to be their champions to make certain that permit fees, when they come in, put in a fence, do some home remodeling, or any other things that will require a permit through the building code, that they're not paying more than what they should. The developers can defend for themselves. So that's very important to know that. The other part is that the, you know, we have building space, I guess, that we rent to Calvin Giordano Associates for their being able to perform their duties. And the question I have is, are those building space costs comparable to what the industry is for these type of office space?
Mr. Dodge, you want to answer that?
The answer to it is yes, they are. They're comparable to what the industry standards are.
Commissioner Good?
Okay, I just... He answered, that's fine. So I want to move on to duration of the term. So we had original five-year with annual renewals, and, you know, it's being asked to change. So what's really important to me, I guess, is, you know, what's the purpose of annual renewals in these kind of contracts? This is a service contract. It was an RFP. It was an initial five years, and it had annual renewals thereafter. So what was the... What could have been the purpose for that? I can ask a question. I'm certain I'll get an answer that supports the continuation of the contract in five-year increments. But I will say that what I believe is important about an annual renewal at this point, because it is at least an 11-year contract, and we're trying to move forward, is accountability in that, you know, annual renewals will put pressure on the service contractor to be accountable for ensuring that we're getting the service, for ensuring that we're getting those expectations met, because every year they would be faced with a renewal. And so if they start slacking off, it makes it easier for the city to terminate. I know we got this terminate for clause, but terminate for no cause.
Convenience.
For convenience. But the issue is, it doesn't normally happen that way. Normally, that's something that's really bad, really not good, and so that rarely happens. But when you have annual renewals, you have accountability, because sometimes these are say, hey, you know, you're not doing your job, and I'm not going to renew your contract. So the other thing about these terms is, you know, I guess is to ask, I don't know if it's the attorney or the city manager, but, you know, what's a reasonable limit on the length of a contract? And at what point does the city start running a risk of a non-compete litigation?
City Attorney?
It's a good question, if I may respond, Mayor and Commission. It's really a discretionary issue and a prerogative of the city commission with regard to the subject matter. Certainly, the state case law tells us that there's an interest in public life and in government practice in particular to provide for competitive selection and for qualifications-based decisions being made by the governmental members for the benefit of the constituents. The commission has to weigh all those factors with regard to competency, leadership, ability, cost savings, and all the various factors in making decisions like this when selecting for professional services, which is what this is. This is not a product per se. This is a professional service which is permitted to be directly contracted for, although in this situation, there was an RFP provided some of them years ago. So at some point in time, the commission can and should and has in years past taken a step back and reviewed and evaluated the service being provided and all the factors that you would consider in maintaining that service would then be in play to make a decision. And if for any reason any one of the items were to be deficient, in your opinion, as a collective body and as a collegial body, you could reopen the conversation about reopening the discussion for other options, such as rebidding or other subset issues. So there's nothing in a script that I can pull off the shelf that gives you the answer. It's fact-driven. It's based upon what that provider is doing, what that particular professional is doing that would cause you to, for pause, want to reevaluate the relationship or to... Because of the satisfactory nature of it, given all those factors. So it's really in your hands discretionarily, but also based upon those factors.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there is no time limit that you're aware of. I mean, we have professional, we have some very high or very notable attorneys within this county that specialize in non-compete litigation, and you have no idea about what is an average amount of time before it starts, the meter starts going red?
I can't answer that question without knowing more of the facts, but your points well taken. The red in the meter really depends upon the venue, the service, the leadership, the ability, the competency, the cost, all those factors that become in play. And if for any reason the collective body, such as yourselves, begin to have a feeling of being less comfortable with those factors, you have a city manager and city administration that studies the issue and can study the issue and give you the analysis financially and open up a door if needed at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I want to also speak a bit about some things that are very important that have come on to my plate, not recently, but actually since I've entered office. And it's about how residents are handled versus developers. Residents are really not talented in this arena. They don't know how to get a permit, and so they really rely on guidance from the folks that are receiving the permits. And developers are very savvy, sometimes too savvy, but they're very, very good. So what's the difference? Well, the difference is when a developer comes in, a permit clerk or the people who are doing the reviews or the inspections or whatever that may be through the building code or through the building services, it's actually very fluid, very easy, very, you know, like a regular day of work. But you have a resident that might come in, and the resident might say, I don't know nothing. And then there's explanation, maybe an understanding, maybe not an understanding, or maybe a misunderstanding. And it requires a repeat on that question or that need. And what happens is if the building services, people who are providing the building services, start becoming frustrated, and the resident, or let's just call it the people who don't know how to do this business, start getting less service because of the frustration that's building. And I could tell you, I know that, and I know that goes to the top level, no less, because I just read an email not too long ago from somebody within the CGA organization that was trying to explain the reason why, you know, certain people are having problems because they don't... They're not a developer. They don't know what they're doing, hence we got to essentially hold their hand. Well, yeah, that's what I want you to do, particularly to my residents. I want you to hold their hand. That's important. It's called customer service. So when I talk about customer service, you know, I ask, when's the last time that we did a survey? You know, we can get, you know, we can get probably an email or two or three or more about, oh, how good we're doing because people love us. Look, they wrote and they said, oh, you guys are doing great. But just as equally, you could probably find a lot of people saying, that is the worst experience I ever had in my life, and please, God, don't ever put me in that situation again. Just as many or more. So a survey would be very helpful, and I don't know if a survey has ever been done since 2009 regarding our building services. The other element about this is development in and of itself. We already know, it's obvious through recent, no less, activity where development is running out. You know, people are... It's very clear that we're running out of space, and it's becoming a premium, and... But there ain't going to be a whole lot more unless we get into, you know, the vertical part of development. But for right now, I don't know that that's on our plate, but development is slowing down. The lion's share of money ain't there no more. What does that mean? That means that in order to be able to continue to fund this service, it's going to start falling on the backs of the residents. And residents need their handheld. So it's very important to recognize that there is a shift. And the other issue about residents carrying more of the permitting needs, is it enough to cover the cost? Question, don't know, but certainly something that I'm thinking of. Mr. Mayor, I have a few more questions, but I'm going to wait until after the public speaks, and then I'll have a few more questions and close out the comment. Thanks, sir.
Good questions. Let me just make a quick comment. I really like Calvin Giordano. I've liked him since the time we've had them in our city. They're very generous when we've asked them to help city projects. And I am going to say on the record, and I get emails like we all do every day, where is my permit? Why don't I have my permit? It's been three weeks. So I, as the mayor, and you would as the commissioner, go into the building department and say, where is this permit? 90%, 90% is the fault of the contractor. Just give a good example. I just got a call from a Century Village resident about the elevators. When I checked with our building department, sure enough, it's a contractor problem. That has to be dealt with, and the residents don't know that. They think it's us. In fact, it's the contractor that we have told them, item one needs this address, item two needs this address. They do item one, they don't do item two. So I've been involved a lot with this, trying to get people's... And you know what? With this COVID, many, many people, residents, are staying home and improving their homes as offices, which require permits, many more than we even ever thought about. So it's huge. It's not that it's slight, but again, the contractor has to be responsible. I just want to make that comment. Anybody else? Any comment? Commissioners?
Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Commissioner Cyple, did you want to go first?
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. If we want to hold people's hands, we need to pay for that. This commission decided to give the administration certain guidance, and the guidance was, we want to see substantial reductions in the amount of this contract. Go get that money, because we asked for it, all the five of us, and come back to us with a deal. Well, Calvin Giordano and Mr. Dodge sat down, they negotiated, and they met the expectation financially that this commission had laid out. But in order to make that happen, the term had to change. That's what happens when you take a bite out of the apple. The apple's never the same after you take a bite out of it. And if you want the apple to stay exactly the way it was before, well, you don't take the bite out of it. If you want people... If you want customer service, you have to be able to pay for it. No one's ever brought that up before. The issue... Overwhelmingly, the mayor is right. Overwhelmingly, when I get a complaint from people saying, what's going on with the permit? I go downstairs and I find out, and there's the system. It's right there, and it tells you, this document is missing, that document is missing. Frankly, I don't even know why they accept the applications at all if they're incomplete. I don't... I'm not in that business. That's for them to decide, and I'm not here to micromanage. I'm here to be a city commissioner. But I might have the instinct as a building official not to accept an application if it wasn't complete. It... All it does is gum up the works. So what's left here... So the term makes sense to me, and the amount makes sense to me, because that is a consequence of what we directed staff and the contractor to do. That is very straightforward. What's left is the customer service reaction that I get from people who do hand in complete applications. And what they say is, your buildings department is tough. I respect that. It would be the easiest thing in the world for them to just issue permits, issue, I mean, and collect roses and nicely worded emails. But they actually care about what they do. They actually care... They care about it professionally, and they make sure that our city is protected. And I have a great deal of respect for that. It's one of the reasons why we have so few fires, is because our buildings are in great shape. Now, some of the contractors, apparently, there's... It does worry me as a resident of Florida that apparently there are some other communities that are less enforcing of the Florida building code than Pembroke Pines is. But Pembroke Pines is very, very strict on how it enforces the code. It expects every facility to meet the code completely, not partially, not this, not that. It expects the facilities to be proper. And that's one of the reasons why our community is as respected as it is. I have no reason to not agree with the recommendation of staff, and I also agree with the mayor, that Calvin Giordano over the years has been an exceptional social partner with the city. They weren't forced to do that, but they do it because they care about the city of Pembroke Pines, and they've been a good partner, and so I see no reason why we shouldn't support this contract. Thank you.
For...
Yes, Mayor, are you recognizing me?
I am.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. A few years ago, when this became a real big issue with residents saying, my gosh, it's taken, you know, weeks and weeks and months, and I don't understand why my permit for my pool or my patio extension or my back room or whatever it was they were looking to have done, wasn't happening, and they were, as my colleagues have said, the blame for that from the resident was clearly on the city, because that's where they thought they had to go to. I'm going to ask Chris Giordano, because I see that he's on the line, to explain, if he would, a little bit, the conversation that he and I had a few years ago and what action he took on enabling and setting up a program where, in fact, residents could actually track their own permit, very easily track their own permit. And as the mayor said, I believe he said, 90% of the time, it was clearly not the city, but it may have been an overactive developer or contractor who took on perhaps too many jobs to do at one time, and things were getting held up at the contractor's end and not at the city's end. So, Mr. Giordano, could you... Would you please explain briefly what you did as far as creating, your staff creating a way for residents and businesses, actually, anyone to check their permit process?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, thank you very much. This is Chris Giordano, Calvin Giordano and Associates. Yes, there is a website that is a customer-facing portal where anyone can go in and access information regarding the status of a permit via owner name, property address, application number or process number. And Commissioners, like we are correct, we implemented that due to the phone calls that were coming in at the time when residents were saying that their permit had been submitted, an application was submitted, and we were finding that at times it not had yet been brought into the building department at all. So this allows anyone to log on, look up their property address, and see if a permit has been applied for in their property. has been applied for in their property. And if it has, to see the status of it. Any plan review comments, either approvals, rejections, or otherwise, will show up on there, so they can begin addressing those as well. And that is utilized by not only the CGA staff, but also the other non-CGA functions that need to review the plans if it were to come to an engineering permit or a fire review as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. And Mayor, I just, I have a, I have a state, you know, sort of something I want to say, kind of a, kind of a statement here. You know, we, we, we try to sometimes think outside the box a little bit and see if we can come up with some good ideas that perhaps might help relieve, you know, some problems or some issues that we're having. And what I've been noticing through, through some emails, you know, of, of recent, was the fact that the building department is only open Monday through Thursday. And so if in fact you should get or need assistance, or get a rejection, or get something on Thursday, you don't have any way of talking to anybody or getting anything cleared up or anything until the following Monday, at, at some, at some point on Monday. And a number of businesses have, have really kind of complained a little bit about that, because while for a, a resident, it's probably, you know, just, it's an inconvenience, they didn't get their permit, they couldn't move forward with whatever they were doing, but for businesses, you know, if they can't open their doors, that's money right out of their pocket. Every day they can't open their door, it's some money out of their pocket, and they certainly are struggling hard enough. So I was just wondering if, in all of this discussion that we're having, if there could be city manager, Mr. Giordano, the rest of you all, to think about the possibility of the building department being open five days, being that Friday, but perhaps only as an online for, you know, work just on, online, that it would be regular work, not overtime, not so that costs would not go up, but a better way to help push these, these permits or these inspections and all of that through, where we're kind of hitting the wall, we're kind of hitting the walls on, on Thursday, and we're, and we're losing, you know, losing ability to move things forward. So I would like to just ask city manager if he would have some conversation and see if perhaps that might be a plausible way to go, to look at doing that, to see if that would actually help with, with some of the dilemma that we're, we're having as far as getting things moving through more quickly. It doesn't address the other issues, which are very valid with, I, I do believe residents need more help than, you know, than vendors do that are, that do this all the time, contractors that do this all the time, and we should, we should be able to do that. And I think we try to as much as we can, but again, you know, time and everything is limited. But perhaps that, you know, that other day, even as an online help, might be a way, might be an answer. So Mayor, I'm asking that.
Yeah, Commissioner Seiple, if I can interrupt. Just remember, when we went to that phase several years ago, we looked at it in depth, and we found that closing on a Friday would save a lot of money, both in utilities and other things. And the, and the workers, we, we asked them to go to a ten-hour day, Monday through Thursday, for a ten-hour day, so that residents could come home from work and go to the building department at a later time. That was the original intent of going Monday through Thursday. So Mr. Dodge, you heard the commissioner, how say you?
And Mayor, and Mayor, if I could, and Mayor, if I could, I remember that very well. I was there, I, I remember all of that very well. What I'm saying, that was done for the entire, it was done for the entire city, for every single employee, and it was a, it was a cost, you know, to be as a cost savings on the things you mentioned. I'm just saying that perhaps we could look at, for building department only, an online version for the, maybe for the Friday, to, to see if in fact that would help move anything forward or help, you know, alleviate some of these backlogs that we are having, or, or just not, just not being able to get an answer on my permit, because it, something was wrong with it on Thursday. Now I don't even have an opportunity to speak to anyone until maybe sometime on Monday.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Yes, I certainly can have those conversations with Mr. Giordano. The, they are on forty hours. We can discuss a five-day, as the commissioner suggests. Right now, we just drop off permits, but having office hours for, and doing inspections, I'll have those conversations with him.
Thank you. And I'm just asking that we look at that as maybe an alternative, you know, something else, another option to help this, this issue along. So thank you, Mayor.
All right, further discussion.
Sports.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I feel like I'm going back from time sitting in the, in the audience to sitting on the dais. The, eleven years ago, Commissioner Good and I were not a part of the decision to privatize the building department. Eleven years ago, we didn't give a contract that is now potentially going to be an additional eleven years. We have employees, public employees, who cannot get more than a three-year labor contract. But this commission's considering a building services contract that's, it's a slap in the face to those who lost their job, just, just on term alone. May I also remind this commission that our commission auditor is currently working on a risk assessment audit for the building department. We approved that for 2020. We haven't received that. So Commissioner Good asked for the manager to find some savings. And I'm going to say this again, this is not in any shape or form a, a, my, my, my dislike or, or anything about the services that we're currently getting. But the commissioner was clear, find savings, not an eleven-year contract. Let's, let's, let's focus on what it is. CGA did not ask for a five-year contract with two, three-year extensions. We directed our manager to sit down to find savings for one year. There's been no discussion about the ERP system that's coming to us in less than two years that is going to annihilate in force. It's no longer going to exist. So we currently have, with respect to Commissioner Good's question of customer service, and Commissioner Seiple, customer service related. I can tell you, in 2009, the city commission was told that by going to a four-day workweek, it was going to save $250,000. That's what the number is, and that's what the manager said. Now, we are in a lead green building now, with all the LED lights and all these savings. Meanwhile, what happens on Friday is the following. You get a, you get an inspection on Thursday, and you get red-tagged or a partial, you can get service on Friday, but you're going to be paying through the nose. It's additional money for CGA to come out on Fridays. That's what's currently happening to anyone, whether it's a resident or a business. We don't have the CGA phone system tied into the city hall phone system, so when their system goes down, we don't know about it. Another problem we have is when you are expecting an inspection, say tomorrow, what happens is, is that you start calling at 7:00 AM, and it's like ringing the bell at Wall Street, and you see everyone scrambling to figure out how they can set their day, instead of it being, I don't know, scheduled on the website the night before, that someone can just go online and look at it. The technology that is currently available to a resident or a business is not up to the standards expected in 2020. It's just not. So the investment that needs to be made in order to provide strong, reliable customer service at the lowest possible cost is opening up our building on Fridays. That's a start. Fix the phone system. That needs to happen tomorrow. Please don't have one person answering the phones. We need a call center. And as far as the cost of permitting, guess what? We, the commission, we dictate that fee schedule, not the vendor. If we decide, you know what, folks, we're going to cut permit fees by seventy-five percent tomorrow, we have a right to do that tonight. So the question we have is, are we going to approve a contract that CGA did not ask for? We, we gave them, they're on a, they're on a one-year extension until, what, July of 2021? We approved that in June. I don't see a reason, until we fix these customer service issues, until we get back to commission auditor, and I know, I know there's, there's one of our colleagues that said our commission auditor always finds the money, that's why he supported it. Why are you going to jump in front of this train when the train hasn't even come to the station yet? There's no rush for us to do this, folks. There's absolutely no rush, Mayor. There's absolutely no rush to do this. I'm not saying go out to bid. I'm not saying any of that. I'm not saying go get an RFP and go out. What I'm saying is, is that we don't have all the information, let alone the promises that were, that have been continuously made, either from the city administration and others, oh, we'll work on that, we'll deliver a better product. It hasn't happened. I can tell you personally, the experience of having to call at 7:00 AM, and you get the busy signal, busy signal, goes the voicemail, you finally get ahold of somebody, they're out of breath because they just spoke to twenty-five people, trying to get scheduled, we're better than that. I know we are. Listen, I, I appreciate the, the, the professional business relationship we have with CGA. They are hard-working people, all of them, top to bottom, okay? But I know we can do better. So my motion is to defer until we receive at minimum the commission auditor risk assessment that was authorized by this city commission. And until such time we get it, no further action should be made on this contract. That's my motion.
Mr. Dodge? Mr. Dodge?
Yes, Mayor.
Does the commission auditor's report late?
He has not had an opportunity, even though as part of his work product, to get it done. There are some things that have slowed down because of COVID. He did do a very blanket report on outsourcing, where he made reference to the building department a couple of years ago, but part of his work product for the, the last fiscal year was to do this on the building department, and we have not received it at this point.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear. All right, further discussion.
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Is, am I going to be recognized for a second or not, Mayor?
Well, we're going to go to, we, let me just say this, I heard you. We have several people on the phone that want to talk, and I want to get to them.
Mayor, a motion to defer, a motion to defer.
Hold on, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, I did not say I didn't hear you. I would like everybody to speak first, and then I will recognize you. That's the chair's, you know, I can do that. And that's what I want to do. Commissioner Seiple, what would you like to do?
I have a question for the city attorney.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. The motion, as I'm reading it, it goes to that, and the city of Pembroke Pines for building services for a five-year period beginning July 1, 2021, with two additional three-year renewals. So with that language being that, does that mean that it is guarant, if we vote on this as it is tonight, that it's guaranteed a five-year, and then guaranteed two additional three-year renewals? It's, they're not the renewal, the renewals, city attorney, are not optional? They are guaranteed based upon the language that's voted on here? I don't hear the city attorney.
So have you got a meeting? City attorney?
Yeah. The, the language in the findings provision of the amendment provides the following, the party's further desire to amend the original agreement as amended, to allow for the eighth renewal term for a period of five years, in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth, and to allow for, to allow for two additional three-year renewal terms at the natural expiration of this five-year term. I'm not sure what the intention was, but the way the language in the section now says that thereafter, the original agreement as amended may be renewed, may be renewed at the expiration of the current two, two additional three-year renewal terms, unless notice of intent not to renew is provided not less than 180 days prior to expiration. If I'm not mistaken, the manager can refer, can, can confirm this, it appears to be optional, which means again, the original agreement as amended is hereby renewed for the eighth renewal term, and pursuant to the terms of the Ninth Amendment, this amendment, the original agreement as amended is hereby renewed for a period of five years. That's a guarantee, with certain exceptions, commencing on July 1 of 2021, naturally expiring on June 30 of 2026. Thereafter, which is after the five-year period, the original agreement as amended may be renewed. So the, to, to answer the commissioner's commentary, it doesn't say shall be or is, it says may be renewed at the expiration of the current term for two additional three-year renewal terms. So that's important to the answer to the question, and further to the extent possible, provides the reservation of notice of, of no less than 180 days to get to a expiration of the document. So it is optional.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, thank you. So I would ask city manager, the city manager on this?
The, the intent, as the city attorney read it, is that that renewal would be subject to mutual consent, which would have to come back to the city commission for consideration for a renewal, for each one. So if it's not renewed, then you'd have to go out for bid. If service wasn't satisfactory at the end of the five years, 180 days prior to that, you would have to rebid it. A hundred and eighty days prior to that, we would notify the commission of the potential renewal, and a decision would have to be made at that time, whether or not to renew it for an additional three years. And that would happen both times. So it's not guaranteed, that was never the intent. If the language is not strong enough, then it needs to be modified to reflect that intent. That's certainly what was discussed with Mr. Giordano, and he understood that as well. He is on the line, he can confirm that for you, or if I, if he doesn't agree with that, he needs to allow, he needs to make that known at this present time.
Well, city manager, yes, thank you, Mayor. City manager, so I, I, I heard that, and I read that, I listened to what you said, I listened to what city attorney said. So would it not make sense then to strengthen, as you said, if there was some language to strengthen what, what might happen, that in, in this motion on our very first page here on our booklet, that where it says, the sentence begins for a five-year period beginning July 1, 2021, and it says with two additional three years, would it not be appropriate then to say, with the option for two additional three-year renewals, which would make that then consistent with the findings and the stuff that, the language that the city attorney read?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
I, I would agree with that, and the city- I, I, I would agree with that, and the city attorney can respond.
And, and we, and we agree. We, but the language in section three of the proposed amendment, uh, is a, what's called a precatory sentence. It may be renewed, which is not a guaranteed op. But if, if you like, the, um, we can strengthen the language to be even more clear, so long as the, uh, the vendor believes that that is the case, which I think clearly. In the contract amendment specifically provides the city with the option, and Mr. Manager is correct in the context of suggesting that. If there's to be additional terms, the commission must weigh in legally to approve them.
Well, and I, I understand all that, and I just wanted both parts of that to, to reflect the same language and the same, um. The, the same, how we would move forward with that.
We can, we can change, Mr. Mayor, we can change the body at section three and also the whereas paragraph to make them compatible and consistent. Uh, particularly with regard to Mr. Dodge's, uh, clarity in that, in that discussion. We can do that in the, in the after condition. We can revise it.
And, and so then the language, the language would then be clear that the two additional three years are op, are optional, and that is written everywhere and consistently everywhere. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Benio, I'd like to go to the public, waiting a long time to speak. Thank you, sir. Uh, city manager, uh, city attorney, do you have to go over the criteria again for the public to speak, or are we okay?
If, if, I can quickly, but, but there, there may be people who have logged in or emailed in or have called in. Um, and the information which I gave at the beginning of the meeting is still applicable in the context of, of the, the gatekeeper, of the Mr. Benia, uh, who probably has some folks waiting. Uh, to the extent that you can go through that list, if need be, we can re, re, uh, restate the, the phone number and the login a, as appropriate, Mayor. But Mr. Benia has.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. All right. So, uh, just to reiterate, uh, I've put the instructions via chat through the WebEx platform for people to know how to, uh, be able to, uh, make a public statement. Um, you can, uh, raise your hand and/or for the callers who, uh, have called in via phone, you can press star three to raise your hand. Uh, so for the first speaker, we will have Stephen Card. I will go ahead and unmute you. Please state your name, address, and, uh, you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Card, go ahead.
Good evening. Stephen Card, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Stephen Card, eleven twenty Southwest Eighty-seventh Avenue, Pembroke Pines, Florida, three-three-zero-two-five. Um, I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and as I had mentioned, a couple of other people were gonna yield time if need be. Um, I had a script. I, I wrote down what I wanted to say to be concise, and, and hearing some of the comments from the commission. It's taking me off script, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off script and come back and then wrap it up and, and do it as quickly as I can. Um, first of all, I, I think the commission knows I've been around for a while. You guys know I have a great deal of respect for you guys and, and believe the same is, is, uh, reversed with myself. Um, also respect for the, uh, for the city commission, I mean, for the city, uh, administration. Though tonight you're going to hear frustration and you're gonna hear, uh, dissatisfaction. And, and I hate to say that, but there comes a time when you've gotta speak up, and that's what I've told my residents to do. I don't know if they're calling in. That being said, just a couple of, of, uh, preemptive comments, um, to, to Commissioner Siple. Um, praising a reporting system that was put out so that you could check on the status of your permits. It doesn't work. I went through absolute hell trying to get a permit on my personal property done. I went into the city after having arguments on the phone over what the status of my permits were. They told me it's not what the system shows. I went in with screen captures on my phone and then in the back offices, live on my phone, pulled up what. The customer portal showed, which did not agree with their portal. So their system doesn't work. So. Don't, don't praise the system, please, because it doesn't work. Okay, the, the other thing to Mr. Mayor. You made a comment, ninety percent of the problem is the contractors. At the workshop, I went back and listened to the meeting. You made the comment that. Most of the comments are coming in complaints from the contractors. The last time I checked, the building department has two customers, contractors and residents. And the problem is, I've been at this for twenty-six years with my HOA, and I'm having a harder time to get contractors to come in for personal issues. Or association issues, because the minute I say Pembroke Pines, they say, based on what I have to do with your building department and the hassles I have and their inability to be. Good customer service, no, thank you. And then I have to go find someone else. So what you guys are seeing is not what's being seen on the outside. So I'll just say that, but let me, let me go back to script and, and take a deep breath. So. As I said, twenty-six years serving my development, fiduciary responsibility is something that I take very seriously. And fiduciary responsibility, which I'm sure the commission is held to, uh, when you look it up, it says legal obligation to the highest degree. For one party to act in the best interest of another. Okay? I, myself, being on my board, we are rebidding the two highest contracts we've got in my association. Management and security. Is it because we don't like what they're doing? No. It's because we can't look at a much smaller audience than you guys look at. In the face and tell them that we're making sure that they're getting the best bang for their dollar. So we're putting it, putting those contracts out for competitive bidding, and I understand that Mr. Giordano's, uh, group. And, and, and there's some, some, some wins here. I'm not, I'm not saying get rid of them. I'm not saying they shouldn't have a contract. You know, and it may sound otherwise, but they've been on, on board since two thousand nine. Hearing Mr. Schwartz say tonight, Commissioner Schwartz say. They didn't even ask for anything more than the one-year renewal, but yet we're giving them five years with two more three years, and then hearing comments that. They're very great partners would be like me saying, well, the reason we don't wanna get rid of our management company or rebid it is because you know they're really good to us and give us good prices. Be careful of that, because that sends the wrong message, just in my opinion. So, um. From the HOA standpoint, uh, the commission was very supportive. You know, my biggest battle out here for the association that I speak mostly for is our mailbox project. Okay, you guys were great. A year ago, May, you guys passed a resolution to help us get curbside delivery. It was supposed to go to the postmaster general. City administration failed to get it there. And, and I say that, and, and, and again, respect to Mr. Dodge. He did help us get some rental boxes recently, but they failed to get that to the right person. When it was called out this past August, instead of doing it then, it was just emailed to the local post office branch that has been less than cooperative with us. From the beginning, and no surprise that they said no. When I spoke to the postmaster over this whole mailbox thing, telling him that we were trying to get this and we had a resolution from the city. He's not the postmaster general, but he flat out said, I don't understand. That doesn't sound like an unreasonable request. Okay, so I'll go further. So, um, when I spoke with Mr. Dodge, he said that he was gonna be calling with a path forward to get the boxes installed. And as I mentioned before, that call never came. At that commission meeting that followed, Mr. Mayor, you and the commission spoke and said. I need you to get in touch with Mr. Card in this association and work things out with them. So instead of that happening, we did have a meeting on the property and, and, uh, representatives from CGA were there. Instead of what I felt was cooperation, what we got was more obstacles. We were told, okay, you definitely need surveys to put in mailboxes. And I'm like, okay, where's our surveys? Because they tolded that they were the records keeper. And so Mr. Dodge said, I'm gonna go back to the city and I'm gonna find out what's going on with your surveys. And I said, all communication include the association so that we're not wondering who's got the answers. Mr. Dodge got ahold of the management company, did not get ahold of the association in addition. It's just a CC, very easy. And said, you guys are over thirty years old. We don't have surveys for you, so now we have to have an added expense of surveys. Had this letter gone to the postmaster general, we would have been afforded the opportunity. To have curbside mailboxes, which would not have required NOCs, permits, uh, surveys. Uh, design engineering, because now CGA tells us, oh, you're gonna need ADA compliance access to these mailboxes, curbing and ramps. And all of this stuff. When we ask, can we use Google Earth pictures that are on file with BCPA? To show you the location of where these mailboxes are gonna go, the answer was flat out, no, you need surveys. So now I gotta have surveys done. Another added expense. Um, had we been able to put in the, the mailboxes curbside, we would have not needed, uh, cameras on the, on the mailboxes. That's another twenty thousand dollars. It's thirty thousand dollars for concrete work. It's another twenty thousand dollars for design engineering. All of this because something wasn't done. So when we were at this meeting, one of our, one of our, one of our, uh, our, uh, clients, one that services us said. You know, one thing is perfectly been made perfectly clear here today. I thought the building department worked for the city of Pembroke Pines. It is clear that they don't. The city works for them, because you're not getting any, any, um, any considerations. On how we can make things work smoother and where can we go? I'm not saying bend rules. I'm not saying forget code, but. No consideration at all when it comes to that. So, um. As, as, as a direct result of city administration not passing that off and giving us an opportunity, as I said, expenses for design engineering, NOCs, permitting. Uh, new concrete pads, uh, expenses for satellite cameras, all of this comes up. And, and in closing, and I think I've covered it all as I'm skipping through this, um, one of, yeah, I could already made, made the comment about the vendor saying that. So I would ask, I would ask the question, what happened to the city commission's request? For them to come together with us, made to the city manager, to work within association in need? Because right now, my residents are dealing with identity theft. They're screaming, why can't I get my mailboxes in? My, my vendor that we have all lined up for mailboxes says, I have never seen this red tape in all of my years of doing this. I would never do a job in Pembroke Pines again. And, and we're better than that, just as some of the commissioners and Mr. Mayor, you've said it before. We're better than that. So when it gets to a point where we are losing the ability to have people wanna do business in Pembroke Pines, that's bad.
Let's find out some answers. Mr. Dodge, you heard Mr. Card. Do you have anything to say? Then I wanna go to Mr. Giordano.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I did receive Mr. Card's memo. I did share it with, uh, our contract vendor, Calvin Giordano, to respond. Uh, a copy of that respond, I, a response I did provide to you. Uh, what Mr. Card says, uh, is quite very frustrating. I did meet with the, uh. Members of the HOA onsite. Everything was reviewed. It was my understanding, and there was. Uh, a summary of the minutes that were sent back to the, um, HOA. Uh, confirming the meeting and what needed to be done. Uh, at this point, I've been advised that, uh, the permit application hasn't been provided. Regarding the US Post Office regarding doing home delivery. Uh, that I don't believe that's going to happen, because any new project comes in in developments, they do use. The gang-type mailboxes, and they have been there since the, uh, construction of that community. So we did meet with everyone. Uh, I did, uh, provide that information. I assumed it was their management company who we were dealing with because they are the one doing the project. If that was wrong, then, uh, I do apologize, Mr. Card, but I assume they hired a management company to do that work for them. But Mr. Giordano is online. I would like him to respond to, uh, the comments regarding. The difficulty and the red tape. Mr. Card says that people will not do work here in the city. Uh, because of our red tape. Our red tape is not our red tape. It's the Florida Building Code. We don't write it. Uh, we don't amend it, but we're required to enforce it. So Mayor, if you may give Mr. Giordano a moment to respond to that, I would appreciate it.
I was gonna say, if I, if I could, and, and I, I don't want, I don't wanna ask to speak over Mr. Giordano, but a key point to what you just said, Mr. Dodge, if I could. The red tape was not in perspect, in, in respect to the building code. The red tape was the inability of the building department to maintain records. The way I was able to finally get my project through was I reached out to Mr. Good, and I told him, I'm, I'm worried about retaliation. Okay, by raising the complaints that I'm raising, is what I told him, and he said, trust me, that won't happen. The way that I was able to finally get them to stop losing my paperwork that my wife and I personally brought in and paid for. With special stamps and everything else and made extra trips to go get, was to take pictures at the window with my phone, and when I went the next time and they said, no, we don't have this, I pulled my phone out. Okay, so that's the red tape I'm talking about. Their inability to maintain records.
Okay, Mr. Card, I, I, and I let Mr., let Mr. Giordano, uh, respond to that. But what I meant by red tape and what I thought you meant by us losing documents. And I thought it was, it was clearly explained to your management company that when we researched the records, and we do keep records. Thirty years ago, there is no record of any survey that was done, I provided. To your management company, the, uh, all the information that we had on the community. Uh, regarding the layout when it was built, but there were no surveys probably ever required at that time. For the post office boxes and their location. It was just indicated by a line where they would go to. Codes have changed all the time regarding ADA requirements and everything else. That was the point I was trying to make, sir. So I, I would appreciate Mr. Giordano being able to respond, sir, and then you can respond back to him under the, with the mayor's permission.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Card and Mr. Manager. Um, yes, that, that is correct. So in the frustrating portions that were outlined in this, and, and I can simply. Um, say that, that I've been on your side of the table, and it is a frustrating process. Unfortunately, we are. Um, helped by our licenses and our contract uphold Florida Building Code. Um, even if there was a thirty-year-old, um, survey, which would have predated CGA's involvement in the building department. Uh, that would not be accepted merely for the fact that so much could have and would have changed over thirty years. Um, datum, actually, the, the elevation datum that we use has changed over the last thirty years, uh, as well as improvements to the site. Rule of thumb is normally a survey is good for a year, and you can push it a little bit further than that prior to, to be required. And again, the Florida Building Code requires a signed and sealed survey. The ADA requirements, um, they are there to protect, um, obviously accessibility. And if we weren't to enforce those, it would, especially for something as public as a, as a group of mailboxes. I, I feel it would only be a matter of time before, um, both the HOA, the city, and, and my company would be served with, uh, papers. Um, subpoenas and, and record requests, and then we would all be on the hook for why we allowed. Uh, a public facility like a mailbox to be built that isn't, uh, accessible to all users. Um, so I, I, I do understand, and I do agree that at times these things are frustrating. Um, but there is reasons for each and every code line in the code, and the two main, um, uh, reasons for those. Issues in the code are for the protection of life and property. The, the, uh, concrete lab that's required and need to be engineered is due to the, uh, the high winds. So Florida Building Code for Dayton Broward County has a. Supplemental section called, called High Velocity Wind Zone, and, and we need to meet those. So that, that's why there's a foundation required and, and anchoring details and things of that. Is we have to verify that if hurricanes come through, that this mailbox isn't gonna rip free and, and what the engineers call a missile or projectile in, into a home or a window or. Or God forbid, somebody, you know, out and about. Um. So un, unfortunately, a lot of times we are the bearer of bad news, and, and certainly we will do what we can to assist you through the process. I, I believe it was mentioned earlier that we did attend. A meeting and provided meeting minutes trying to clarify what is needed. Um, and I do understand what it said is something. Simple as a mailbox, why is all this needed? Um, you know, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and, and explain why and, and. Uh, past lessons learned and, and why those things are there and, and where the lawsuits or the injuries came from that, that required those. And, and again, with every lawsuit. Each year, um, at times, the, uh, the building officials, BORA, and the Florida Building Code get together and they do supplemental updates for those reasons, lessons learned throughout the years that we've been enforcing this. Um, if I may, Mayor, one other thing that I'd like to express was the scheduling of inspections. We do have an online scheduling system. It's a, a link on the city website. We actually prefer and promote it, uh, whenever we can for anyone to use it. And each day, a log of where each inspector is going, their complete route, uh, a two-hour time window when they will be there, along with their cell phone number, uh, is listed on that website daily. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have more speakers?
Mr. Mayor.
I mean, any more callers?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, do I have an opportunity to respond? Since we did have people, could, did I have a poss, uh, I have a, uh, an opportunity to make a couple more comments since we did have people.
I quit it, because I gave you, I gave, quickly, Mr. Card, I gave you ten minutes. So quickly, go ahead. We have other people on the phone.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just real quick.
Hold on, I can't hear a bit.
Um, I understand that the, uh, can, can we confirm that this is still being live television? Because I understand that it's not.
Are we still being live?
Yes, I'm seeing you on my computer.
Yes.
Not on the computer, but on the television.
Well, it's streamlined, right?
I can't answer.
Being told that, that, uh, over our city network TV, it's not running.
All right, we'll find out.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor.
That's all right.
Okay. Mr. Giordano.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Card, hold on.
Yeah, I will. I will. I will. Yeah, I will, I will, I will.
Can you find out? We're checking it.
Okay.
All right, meantime, let me take a couple, couple more callers, Mr. Card, uh, that have been holding on the line. Okay, go ahead, Mr. B.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have Andrew, uh, with his hand raised. I will unmute you, please state your name and address, and, uh, you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrew LaPlante, ADA 10 Southwest 10th Street, Pembroke Pines, 33025. I yield the remainder of my time. Stephen Card.
Okay, next speaker. Next question.
Okay, the next speaker that we have here is, uh, Richard Cobberley. I will unmute you, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Richard Cobberley. I'm at 1784 One Stop Northwest 15th Street. Uh, I'm here as the homeowner and as the association president for Honeywood Homewards Association. I had the unfortunate dealings to work with the permitting department, uh, earlier this summer as, um, electricity electrical panel replacement. I made the mistake of telling my contractor, don't worry about it, I'll take care of the permit, saved myself $300, $400. It was the worst mistake I've ever done in my entire life. Um, it, it, although I filled the paperwork out properly, their customer service of providing information is not there. Um, as, um, the commissioners already pointed out, uh, have to be inspected, put a request in online where they provide a box for comments, and I put in a comment, please call me 30 minutes prior to arriving so I can be there. That didn't happen, and it doesn't say you must go on the next day to what time your inspector is going to be there. That didn't happen. Got to the house, my rental, and I got a nice little note there, no one home, uh, no access, no permit. Gotta pay another fee of, I think it was $90 to get a reinspection. I called for two days to try and get somebody on the phone. Uh, they do not answer their phones there. Um, then, once I get the information from them, they do provide what I needed to do at that point. However, um, to, the commissioner said we had to call at 7 o'clock in the morning, actually 8 o'clock in the morning, we must call. And 8 o'clock in the morning, they publish their spreadsheet of when they're going to be there, as Mr. Giordano just said. But they also-
Okay, could you, could you wrap up your comments, please? We have other speakers.
They also spread their inspections at 8 o'clock. So when I live on West Pines, it's Pines, at 8 o'clock, when I pull my inspections between 8:00 and 8:30, I don't make the gain and have to pay another $90 for a reinspection. It is all about customer service. I echo everything Mr. Carter says, and, and Commissioner Good, Mr. Corfett said about customer service about this.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker. Next question.
Thank you, Mayor. As of right now, we only have, uh, Mr. Card to respond.
All right, Mr. Card, go ahead.
I will, I will, I will keep it brief. The only other comments that I have is this, back to fiduciary responsibility. If I were to tell my homeowners that I know that there is somebody that's come forward that can do the same business for the association to the same degree or better for a substantially less price, I could not look my homeowners in the face and tell them that I didn't at least entertain a competitive bid. And I understand that that's the situation we're in with the city. There has been a vendor that has come forward that has stated that they can provide the same or better services for the building department, and I'm not hearing any consideration of a competitive bid for the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines, and I, I don't know how anyone serving for the, for the, and I, again, great deal of respect for you guys, I don't know how you look at your constituents, other than to make the comments, well, they're a good partner and financially and supportive of the city, that just doesn't cut it. That's it. Thank you for your time, I do appreciate it. Mr. Giordano, thank you for your comments and explanations, and I do know we're in a litigious society, so you're right, lawsuits happen very quickly.
Miss, Mr. Mayor. It's been a little frustrating. Just hold on a second, I'm talking, please. Mr. Card, again, I realize it's been very frustrating, uh, it's been frustrating for us as well. So, all right, uh, Mr. Dodge, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, uh, the, the comment that was just currently made, that there's been another proposal from someone who could do it cheaper. I'm not aware of any proposal, nor would it be appropriate for anyone to provide us with a proposal since we're not out for a formal bid at this time. So I'm a little lost by that statement, and that's my only comment.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Good, we're gonna go, Commissioner Good, we're gonna go back to you, you had a couple more comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So, um, I, I, uh, I do want to expand a little bit on the vice mayor's reference about, uh, the audit. I, I know that, um, you know, the city, you know, does audit all its business functions. I, I just, I didn't know anything about whether this particular business function actually got audited. So I actually made a call to our, our internal auditor today, and some very interesting information came from them directly. So yes, Commissioner Schwartz, I mean, uh, Vice Mayor Schwartz actually made a very accurate, uh, statement that, uh, that, uh, the building services were approved for an audit from us, um, you know, in the beginning of the year as part of their projects. And, uh, that being said, uh, you know, they don't need us to bring it to them to get approved 'cause it already was. And where is that today? Well, it's on the desk as we speak, uh, being, uh, processed for, uh, whatever they do to do their audit stuff. Um, it's, uh, very important to recognize that, I said, well, well, what are you doing with the audit? I mean, what, what kind of audit are you doing? 'Cause I'm, I'm very interested to know, 'cause this is a very important issue for all of us. I mean, the, um, and I think that the, uh, city attorney may make reference to the fact of, you know, an oversight even on top of us in regards to how we handle this. So I, uh, I, I want to make it very clear that the audit that they're going to do does a lot of things for me. 'Cause right now, a, a lot of things that I've seen, I, I don't know if I can trust it. Uh, we have a staff analysis, I look at this, at the analysis, and I have, you know, a number of questions. I understand that the audit is going to do something very similar to what staff does. Only difference is, it's a third party. They don't have any vested interest in any of this, other than the fact of doing an audit and providing information to us. I think it's very, very important. Um, you know, they're, they, they will make certain that, uh, in the audit that we are in compliance with state statutes, and, and by that, that means, you know, uh, we're not going to be, um, you know, in some sort of violation and challenge later. And they also are going to check the permit fees and, you know, and how, how it looks across other, um, municipalities, whether it be local or in the state, and, you know, they have some normalizing functions that makes it a little bit easier for us to understand the permit fees as they relate to this city. So I, I think that's very, very important. Um, the other thing is, is that, you know, we, uh, again, Vice Mayor made a, a reference to, you know, Lester Osh, 'cause he's absolutely right, we already approved the agreement. It's, it, the annual renewal was done. And now we, we are looking at, um, maybe prematurely approving something where there's still some additional information, because even, um, Commissioner Sifil asked the last meeting, she said, listen, there were some things that were brought out, uh, that, that didn't get answered, and I, and I think it still hasn't been answered. And when, and what I mean by that is, there are options. What are the options? Well, we know we got, uh, this. The other option is to stay with the annual renewal. Uh, another option is to rebid. We know if we rebid, you know, there is a favorable market condition, and we know that we, when, when we rebid, we have competition. Competition equals better value. Better value means better service, better customer cost, you know, better revenue share even. Um, you know, then there's the other option of, uh, of, of doing a public-private blend. We didn't get any information on what a public-private blend would do. I mean, there was, uh, it, it, it hasn't been explored. I, what was interesting is, and why I'm, I'm, I'm even referencing that, it's interesting that back in 2009, when this project was, or, or this, this contractor, this service was put out to bid, in the scope of work, it specifically said, the highest member that we were outsourcing was the assistant building official, not a building official. And for me, that's very important to have a building official, our own building official, not a contract building official. But yet, somehow, the contract got a building official, and so it meant to me that somehow there might have been some complation about doing some sort of public-private blend, and I really liked to have the opportunity to see that. So there is time to do that. There is time to look at some of these analysis, not a quick, throw something together, uh, you know, like when we looked at the in-house, uh, it, it was over the top. It was an over-the-top analysis. It was like the extreme, not something that was a little bit more realistic in my mind. And I think that we need to see a little bit more of that. You know, this, um, it, what's, what's, what gets me is, you know, we started on this with a very simple thing. This particular contract renewal was brought before us on our database, con- contract database, on June, in June. And, um, and there was minimal information, and it was under a consent item. And when we have consent items, uh, Commissioner Castillo made it very clear earlier that they're typically, uh, you know, not a whole lot of deal, whatever. Well, this obviously is a big deal, and this is a big controversy. First and foremost, it should not have ever been hidden on the contract database and the consent item for a multimillion-dollar, multi-year contract. So I want to say, that's how it started out. And so we agreed to the annual renewal, but then I asked for just a simple thing. Can you reach out and see if they could help us while we're going through this COVID-influenced revenue reduction? That's all. And I'm gonna quote, word for word, go and review it, whatever it's, took me the time to write it down, this is the city manager's response. It is my understanding that it will be the only provision of this contract that I will be having discussion with this vendor about. It will not change any other provision of the contract, and the provision of the contract we were talking about was just the revenue share. It, that was it. I just gave you the short side of it. But then, next thing you know, come October 7th, we got a, 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 the term of the agreement went from a one-year annual renewal to a five-year contract with annual renewals. It was only annual renewals, it wasn't even a three-year renewal. So now, we're at this 11-year contract, uh, where, because we're being asked for five-year contract with two three-year renewals. I mean, it went like blown to craziness. And, and all we asked was a simple question, just to find out if we had a partner, and it's apparent that maybe we don't, in my mind, have the right partner. So, uh, where I'm at right now, um, is that I'm a little concerned the city administration is making a highly aggressive push not to bid the service out. I mean, this went from a simple request to what appears, uh, now to attempt to keep this contract away from the city commission. I am not really comfortable with that right now. I will say that, um, I, I, uh, I will support, uh, Commissioner Schwartz's recommendation or, uh, a motion for deferral, 'cause I think he's, I, I think we need to do a little bit more. We have an audit that's being done, we should wait until the conclusion of that audit, just to make certain that, A, listen, everything is fine, 'cause I think it's premature, we try to do something without that kind of, of, of valuable, uh, third-party review. And I think that we should also, because we have time, should be able to get more details on the other options that are available to us. One of the interesting things in my conversation today with the auditor was, you know, in 2017, we did put something there, and we said, hey, you might want to check some of those contracts out because you might be better off going in-house with them. And I said, oh, that's interesting. So I, I, I am on a, on a journey to go find that, that contract, 'cause I wasn't here in 2017, but I, I will find it. So, uh, again, I, um, I, I, I will support, uh, the vice mayor's recommendation, and I urge all of us to do the same thing, because, uh, I, I do think this is a little bit premature, and, and it may cause us a little bit of grief, uh, in the absence of getting some of this additional information.
All right, let me go back and recognize the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, uh, move the, uh, uh, my motion, uh, as stated on the record, requiring a second.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Yeah, I didn't get that motion.
Perhaps, uh, the clerk did, or it wouldn't have been recorded in like I got it.
Just repeat the motion. Just repeat the motion. Want to defer this item?
My motion is, is defer this item until such time that at minimum, we get the risk management assessment from the commission auditor, uh, regarding the building department.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Good. Discussion on the deferral. Fair and non-city clerk, follow the roll.
Thanks, Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Commissioner Sifil?
Yes.
Mayor Wardes?
No. All right, the motion passes. All right, uh, thank you all for a great discussion. Uh, city attorney, we're now on item 26, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Number 26 is referenced in the reference book as 20-0901. Uh, it is a motion to authorize administration to issue a request for proposal for solid waste and recycling collection and disposal services related to the current contract expiring on May 31 of 2021. Item 26 on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission.
Castillo moves the item.
Thank you very much, uh, city attorney. Uh, Commissioner Castillo moves the item, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sifil. Uh, further discussion, item 26.
Yes, Castillo.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Similar to the last item, we, uh, gave the city attorney, uh, city attorney and city, uh, manager, uh, direction. Uh, the five of us participated in that direction, he went and he, he sat down with the current provider, who's been a, a good partner for the city, and, uh, they weren't able to come to terms. The, uh, uh, both parties threw their hands up, and they could not come to terms with an extension. We're gonna need to have a provider, and so the only way to do that now is to go to bid. This differs from other scenarios where we have given the manager direction. In other instances, the manager has been able to come back to us with a deal. And then, when he comes back to us with, with a negotiated deal, it's for us to decide whether we want it or we not, or we don't. In this case, he wasn't able to come up with a deal, so we have no choice. We have to go out to bid and, uh, um, and hope for the best. Thank you.
Mayor?
Commissioner Sifil?
Yes, Com- yes, Mayor, uh, I have a bit of a dilemma. I seconded this motion, and that was in error. I'm removing my second on this motion. I'm sorry, I was, I was looking at another piece of paper.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, we have a motion to authorize administration. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Second by Vice Mayor, uh, Schwartz. All right, further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, if I can comment.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, let's be perfectly clear that the, the last comment made is, is, is beyond, um, the, the city attorney has provided a memo that says that we must go out to bid. This has nothing at all to do with providing the city manager the opportunity to negotiate. Been here for 15 years, the city attorney is what provides us the legal guidance.
Point of information, Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Mr. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
My, my recollection, I'll, I'll, I'll ignore the, uh, the rudeness of the argument and just get to the, the, uh, the, the substance. My, my information is that this commission directed you and the city, uh, uh, manager to negotiate potentially a one-year contract with this vendor, is that not correct?
The discussion related to a one-year extension, that, that was the only item that was discussable.
Okay, and you all went and you, and you met with, uh, with this vendor for a one-year contract, is that correct?
I did not, the manager had his, his exchanges with the-
That's fine, I know he speaks to you and gets his, his advice that way. Mr. Manager, were you able to come to an agreement on that one year? Mr. Manager, were you able to come to an agreement on that one-year, uh, contract that we directed you to negotiate?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the response is no.
Okay. And on that basis, you are recommending that we go out to bid. Is that correct?
I'm recommending we go out for bid because of the terms of, that were presented to us by our vendor. The city attorney indicated to me that we could not do so.
Okay. So, so, so you feel we have no option other than to go out to bid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, allow me to, allow me to finish. They, this, I, I'm, I'm gonna request that the city attorney read the memo to the city commission on the public record so that this is abundantly clear. It doesn't matter what the contract terms were to be negotiated. The fact is, is that we can't, according to our ordinance. City Attorney, could you read the memo, please?
Point of order. Mayor, point of order, Castillo.
Point of order?
It has just been explained unless the city, uh, unless the city attorney advised that we break the law. Uh, City Attorney, this memo that you're about to, uh, read, does it conflict with anything that the city commission has done in the past or currently?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just for the record, I'm referring to the memo dated October the 21st, 2020. It's in the backup. It's number 2020-180, in which we discussed the, uh, the issue of renewal terms and related activities.
Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor? You heard, City Attorney?
No, the, the, the city attorney hasn't read the memo, Mayor. I'm asking it to be read.
Oh, I'm sorry. City Attorney, read the memo, please.
If you like, Mayor and Commission, I'd be happy to. On March 26, 2013, the City and Waste Pro of Florida, Waste Pro, entered into an agreement for solid waste and recycling collection and disposal services, the original agreement. Section 3.2 of the original agreement provided for a five-year franchise term with two additional renewal options. The initial term of the original agreement commenced on June 1 of 2013 and terminated on May 31 of 2018. As to the renewal term, on June 5, 2018, the City and Waste Pro entered into the first amendment to the original agreement. The first amendment provided for a three-year renewal term with an option for an additional final one-year term. The first renewal term commenced on June 1 of 2018 and will terminate on May 31 of 2021, which is coming up. In accordance with the first amendment, the City and Waste Pro have the option to extend the franchise for one additional one-year term. The city's award of the original agreement to Waste Pro was the result of a request for proposals, references AD 12-03. The RFP was incorporated as an exhibit to the original agreement, and the terms and conditions set forth therein remain binding on the parties. As part of the Waste Pro, Waste Pro's response to RFP, Waste Pro submitted fee proposals for solid waste collection, including recycling and bulk services. Section 3.14 of the RFP provides for yearly adjustments to the monthly rates beginning on the anniversary date of the original agreement, based on the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for the Miami-Fort Lauderdale area, Florida. It is our understanding that the city administration is currently negotiating the terms of a potential second and final amendment with Waste Pro, since these services were competitively bid pursuant to the RFP. And given the fact that the RFP provides for, for rate adjustments pursuant to the CPI, it is our opinion that the monthly rates for services established in any second amendment should be consistent with the Waste Pro, with Waste Pro's response to the RFP, which is incorporated into the original agreement as amended. Additionally, Waste Pro's response to the RFP included proposals for bulk pickup services once per month and twice per month. Uh, in the event that the city seeks to transition from twice per month bulk pickup to once per month, the city attorney's office recommends utilizing the rate structure for once-per-month bulk pickup, as set forth in Waste Pro's response to the RFP. In accordance with section 3.14 of the RFP, as previously cited, any adjustments to the fees for services should be limited to the CPI. It is our, in our opinion, failure to adhere to the terms and conditions of the RFP and Waste Pro's response, which are both incorporated into the original agreement as amended, may subject the city to scrutiny from the Broward County Inspector General's Office, be advised of the OIG in accordance with the, uh, section 10.01b of the Broward County Charter, as just, as jurisdiction, pardon me, over both the city and Waste Pro as the city contractor. As to transition, section 3.14 of the first amendment further provides for a transition process in the event that the agreement is, expires or is terminated for any reason. This section specifically states as follows. In the event of a termination for any reason or the expiration of the renewal term or any subsequent term, the contractor shall coordinate and work with the city during any transition to a subsequent vendor and ensure that there is no disruption in service provides by the, provided by the original agreement and this first amendment. In accordance with the section, in the event of a termination, Waste Pro is contractually required to coordinate with, with the city to ensure that there is a seamless transition to any subsequent vendor engaged to provide solid waste and recycling collection and disposal services. In conclusion, this memorandum is intended to respond to a number of specific questions posed by the city administration related to Waste Pro and to assist the city with its negotiations on a potential second amendment to the original agreement. Based on the foregoing, the city has a legal option to enter into a final one-year renewal, renewal term for Waste Pro. Should the parties desire to enter a final renewal term, the fees for services should be consistent with the original agreement as amended and subject to, only to adjustment in the CPI. And we're happy to provide other assistance, uh, uh, or information as we, we can be, can be provided. And that was the memo dated October.
Uh, thank, thank, yes, uh, quickly, yeah, quickly, Mayor. Thank, thank you, uh, City Attorney for doing that. Um, colleagues, um, if, if this, uh, if this motion passes to support the administration and the city attorney, uh, to go out to bid, um, it would be, it would be my hope and intent that this commission, uh, conduct a workshop to, uh, use the, uh, current contract that we're currently operating under, make the necessary improvements, uh, that we've learned over the last, uh, eight years. And, um, before we go out, before we come with a formal, uh, RFP process, um, this, this is the, uh, this is the largest contract, uh, that the city, uh, has, uh, next, next to the, uh, building department with respect to revenue and day-to-day impacts. And, uh, I'd like to have all of us have the opportunity to provide the city manager some direction, uh, on the procurement process and, and how the, uh, contract can be improved that would give, um, uh, the, um, uh, the, the residents and, and the business community, uh, the best opportunity for the highest level possible, uh, service at the lowest possible cost. Thank you, Mayor.
Seifel?
Okay. Commissioner Seifel?
Thank you, Mayor. Have a question for the city attorney.
Go ahead.
I just, I just listened to you, City Attorney, read your, your, your memo. And in your conclusion, that you do say that based on the foregoing, the city has the legal option to enter into a final, into a final one-year renewal term with Waste Pro. Should the pro, parties decide to enter into a final renewal term, the fees for services should be consistent with the original agreement as amended, subject only to adjustments to the CPI. So that is saying that we do, we do, as a commission, have an option to exercise a final one-year with, with the terms as you just, as would be described in here. I would like to, to know if there was a representative from Waste Pro that's here that would like to answer a question as to whether that is an option for them. Is there anyone from Waste Pro that's here?
Let's find out. Is there a representative from Waste Pro on the?
The, the, Russell Mackey, can you hear me?
Hey, Mr. Mackey, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, no, as we stated in the, uh, the last meeting, um, you know, we're not able to extend the agreement under those conditions or provisions. Um, and, and again, as, you know, something else that we did state in the last meeting, I mean, just even in the way that this meeting opened up tonight over four hours ago, there's a disclosure read by your city attorney that in the health, safety, welfare of the community, you have the ability to waive any of your purchasing ordinance, any of your commission ordinance, any of your issues with the best interest of that. Uh, there's plenty of case law out there. Again, I can't speak specifically to your city. Uh, there was never any serious consideration given to that being an opportunity, uh, to, to, to actually be, uh, go down the path. And again, I, I, I respect your attorney very much. He's a very smart guy, smarter than I am when it comes to law. So, uh, you, you, you know, if you're basing your due diligence on that, the terms and conditions are not in the best interest, uh, as a whole, because they don't support the, the actual reality of what is occurring in the market today and don't allow the ability to give the service, which is a value, is another part of the best interest in, another part of the best interest in your community. So, uh, there, there is absolutely a way to address it. Uh, it's just, it, it would, it would, in my, you know, it would take some creativity on, on your part, but you most certainly would not be, uh, violating any, uh, state laws in my professional, again, you have an attorney, and it's his job to, to give you his opinion on things as well.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mackey. Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, City Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, miss, miss, thank you. Mr. Mackey, just use some, some words. Um, and, and I'd like for you to sort of explain, uh, to me what, what it means, um, in the best interest of, you know, and I know we've, through the years, I know that I have seen that many times in our, in our conversations and in our agenda books, you know, notes that were brought up. So how does that, how does that apply? Or how would that apply in this particular case?
It's, it's a finding which the commission would have to make with regard to the best interest of the city. That, that's a, a finding which, which historically, in your procurement code, allows the commission to make a review factually of the issues before it and to make that determination publicly during the course of a public meeting. Um, there are times when there have been procurements which are charged with that responsibility under the procurement code, and the city has made, made those, those, those findings periodically. Not, not, not all the time, but, but periodically.
Right. No, I, I, I didn't say, I wasn't saying all the time, but I know that it has happened on a ca, on occasion. So in this particular case, if in fact the commission, uh, were to say that in their opinion, that they thought it was in the best interest of, of the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines to, to go forward or to move forward with the, with this contract, um, as, as it, as it is currently, then if we deemed it in the best interest, then your opinion of that it being an illegal move would not, would not be so. Is that correct?
I would never suggest the commission would perform or would act in an illegal or unlawful way. Um, it, it is, it is provided for in the procurement code. And what we're talking about solely is a one-year issue.
Point of information?
Correct. And I'm not, and I'm not saying, I'm not stating that, saying, trying to say that you would ever advise us of anything, you know, uh, that shouldn't, shouldn't be. But if in fact this, um, if this does meet the merit or the criteria of being in the best interest of, as we have used it, as you said, sparingly, but through the years it has been used, if it would apply in this particular case, then it would be, it would be, um, something that we could do, just as we would have done it in other issues throughout the years. Is, is that, am I understanding you correct on that?
You're dealing solely with the issue of the one-year extension.
I, I get that. I, I understand that, yes. But we already, we already have that option and, and we, we already have that option to be able to do a one-year extension.
I can just say, I can, I'm sorry.
Right, right, okay.
Point of information? Commissioner Castillo?
Commissioner, Commissioner Seifel brings up, I'm, I'm sorry, Iris, your, your, your title says Vice Mayor. It threw me off. Commissioner Seifel brings up the item of one year. But the problem is that the vendor has said no to those terms for one year. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, the, the vendor did in fact say no to the one year. In addition to no for the one year, they also requested an increase in rates. And I believe that's what caused the city attorney, he can speak for himself, to provide his opinion. If they're coming back and saying they're willing to do one additional year under the same terms, then I don't think it's an issue.
So.
They advised, that's not their.
So this is where, so this is where 15 years does pay off. So in years past, when we've done this, what we've done is we've turned, without trying to negotiate this from the dais, uh, because that's a very powerful chess move. Uh, and it has very powerful downsides. Uh, what we've done is we've told the city manager, go, come back to us with the best deal possible. But this time, we told them, no, we want a one-year deal, and we want it this way, and we want it that way, and we want the boxes this way, and we want, uh, the, the trucks that way. And he went and he did what, what we directed him to do. And he came back empty-handed, because the vendor wouldn't agree to those terms. So now, he has no option but to, but to come back to us. I'm glad that we dispensed with the, with the legal misinterpretation. He has no option but to come back to us with a recommendation to go out to bid. So unless, unless I'm misunderstanding this, the only way we can go back to Waste Pro is on their terms. Because that's the downside of how, of how this was played. In years, in years past, in opportunities past, we, we just turned to the manager and said, come back to us with the best deal or with a recommendation to go out to bid. It wasn't negotiated from the dais. That's not how this commission chose to do it. So that's the situation that we're in right now. And, and that's why the city manager, and correct me, Charlie, if, if, if I misstate this, the city manager is saying, I have no option but to ask you to go out to bid, because I don't have a viable negotiated option to play with. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, let me, let me add something. Let me add something. Uh, on this motion, Mr. City Manager, I happen to like Waste Pro, because I think they were good for residents. While some factions may have occurred over the contract COVID and, and one of them, where garbage and trash wasn't picked up. Soon as I called this company and said, this happened, this company went right out and did it. For whatever reason, a driver missed it, a driver came in sick, whatever reason, this company is a good company and came out and did that. I personally want to see this company continue as our provider for the city of Pembroke Pines, because we've always had a good relationship with them. We've always had a fair price. My fear is that if we go out to bid, the residents will suffer, because the bid may come back much, much higher. And then what have we done to our residents? Uh, so I have that quandary in myself to say, if we don't renew this contract, then a bid process takes place, and I could only think that the bid process would be much higher for our residents. Do I make myself clear, a city attorney?
I hear you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, so I'm in a dilemma. I, I, my personal point is I'd like to have this company continue our services in the city of Pembroke Pines. Uh, so how do I do that?
Is that a question to the city attorney or the city manager?
Uh, I'm asking anybody at this point.
I mean, we've given your.
I think there has to.
I don't know, I have to do it again.
Well, I, I think there's gotta be some agreement, some way we can come up as a commission, direction to try to make this happen. I'm not sure how that is going to take place. I guess that's what I'm asking. Is it a possibility that we can do that without illegal or any of those terms?
Mayor, uh, this, this is Ash Schwartz. Uh, ma, Mayor, I, I think, um, I, I think I can speak for the most of, of, for the majority of us that, um, this is a very, this is a very, um, difficult process to sort out, because of router. We don't even know what our costs are gonna be. We become free agents in, uh, in, in 12. in 12 months. I mean, we had this discussion a year ago. We said, well, in 24 months, we're going to be a free agent. We had the discussion 36 months ago. And in three years, we're going to be a free agent. Um, i- it's my, I'm, I'm still of the opinion that, um, that the good faith contract that was entered into eight years ago was under a time that there wasn't Amazon and Uber Eats and COVID-19 and, um, stickers not on trash cans and, uh, not having an education program about co-mingling bulk. These are all things that we've dealt with over the last eight years. We've solved those things. But the one consistent issue that's actually causing our rates to go up or have been at, or let me, let me, let me strike that. The, the reason why revenues are impacted is because of the end of the, um, Rooter's contract where we had our savings on the front end. Now, if you look at the full Rooter's contract, this city has benefited much greater than other municipalities in the long run. So we have recycling that has become, uh, tremendously difficult to process at a reasonable cost. Um, that changed in the last eight years. So if we're going to retool anything, this is the reason why I'm asking for us to get together and have a workshop on the good, the bad and the ugly about this framework, because moving forward, you can't expect a vendor, you can't force a vendor to say, well, you're going to do it. Now, state law says in this case that they have to perform until we get a new provider, if that's the direction that the city takes. And clearly, that's not, I don't think any of us want to put our, our, any of our vendors in that kind of a position. So I, I think that, I think it was unfair to us as the commission to have the vendor come to us in October after we approved the budget. These, these discussions could have been held eight months ago. I mean, I, I recognize that, you know, COVID was a, you know, March forward event, but that didn't change, that didn't change the cost, the process things. That, that's been a, that's been a constant for years. So both sides, in good faith, have worked extremely hard to get the best possible result for our residents. That hasn't gone unnoticed. And the manager is recommending that we go out to bid. I spoke to Waste Pro this morning. They called me personally and they also agree that we should go out to bid. So I don't know if you got the phone calls, but I did. And they said, listen, we agree with Mr. Goran. We looked at everything. We're, we're, we're planning on making our proposal. Rates may go up. We may or may not be your vendor. I mean, that, that's, that's what they said to me. So I, I didn't, you know, I, mayor, I, 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 I can totally appreciate where you're coming from, because this is a very big decision. Now.
Well, and, and the, and the, and the calls I got as well, they don't agree with the, uh, city attorney, who is one of our great city attorneys, on the legality of the issue. So, you know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Uh, so I'm at a quandary here tonight, uh, as to what to do. The item before us is an item that's clear. We go out to, we go one year and go out to bid.
Mayor, mayor, if I may, i- if I may, just, and, and I, I don't want to debate you and I want to move the meeting along, but we've gone out to bid before and we've gotten those bids and we've rejected them. So I, I, I'm not feeling where there's much of a change at this point. I think, I think we need to give our residents some certainty. Um, I, I do believe that the city is at a disadvantage not having struck, uh, a direction with Rooter, whether or not we stay with them or we don't. Um, it's my hope, it's my hope that when we return from, uh, you know, from, from, from the holiday break, that the manager is able to make a little bit more progress. Um, so if it's, if you believe, mayor, that the manager might be able to work something by February 1st, we just hold off on taking any action tonight until we hear back from the manager.
Castillo, comment?
But, but at this point, mayor, I believe, I, I believe that because of our ordinance and, and, and a, and a 180-day deadline, I think we're really up against the wall that we have to, that, that we have to make a decision tonight. And I'm, I'm going to support the city attorney and I'm going to support the conversation I had today with our current vendor, um, in the hopes that we're able to come to a final conclusion with what we're going to do with Rooter. So that, that's where I'm at. I'm, I'm, I'm just letting you know, I'm, I'm supporting the item tonight based, based on all that information that, you know, that I have.
Okay. Commissioner Casille?
Okay. Um, how do I say this? The deal that we have to cut, however, whatever process, RFP renegotiation, has nothing whatsoever to do with Rooter. Rooter is a separate item, has nothing to do with who collects the, the, the trash and what we charge them to collect the trash. These are two different things. The Rooter deal can come in higher or lower. The replacement could come in higher or lower. We're going to have to, we're going to have to figure out who's going to pick up the trash, the recycling, the bulk at, uh, at, 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 at our, at our locations. And then, and then whatever the tonnage is, that's going to be a pass-through. That, it, it, these are, these are, these are unconnected matters. Right now, what we have in front of us is we have an expiring contract with our trash collection company. We have been in this position many times before, at least four or five times in my service to the city. And sometimes the answer is you go out to bid and sometimes the answer is you renegotiate. Unlike previous times, we chose to renegotiate with very, very specific instructions that came from the dais. I was not in favor of that, but I respect that the commission has the right to do that. They, we gave the manager the specific instructions. The manager carried out those instructions and the, and the, and the hauler said, hell no. So we have no place to go now, but to go out to bid. And there's nothing confusing about the city attorney's memo. It's crystal clear. We have all of the options. This is the option that they're recommending because they've played all of the other cards that we gave them to play. So I don't know, I don't know. I understand the mayor says, but, but I really want to keep this, this, this vendor. That's not enough now. We need to know how. If you want to keep them, you need to propose how. So, so, Mr. Manager, let me put it, let me put it to you. The mayor has said he wants to stay with the current Carter. How could that possibly occur?
Mr. Manager?
I need to unmute myself. Um, once again, uh, in order, in the way I understand it, for us to, uh, extend the contract for one more year, uh, according to the current contract, it has to be under the same terms and conditions. If, if the fee schedule, if the rates are going up or whatever that might be, then the city attorney would have to address how you can handle that. I'm, I'm simply relying upon the information that was given to me. The conversations that I had with Waste Pro were very good. They explained to me what their rationale was. I understood what their rationale was, but I believe my hands are tied that I cannot recommend anything differently than what you had before you.
Right.
If there's something more creative somebody else comes up with, then, then so be it. But I have to go based upon what I'm being advised is the, what the law is.
I can't think of anything else. Can anybody think of anything else?
This, this, this is Russell Mack, Waste Pro. Can everybody recognize?
Mr. Mackey.
Okay. Well, you know, there's three, three comments that need to be addressed here. You know, one, uh, the idea, and yes, we will, we will perform a smooth transition to the, to the other company, but that is not an indefinite timeline. You're still on a very quick timeline in which that needs to occur, uh, by, by the agreement that, that, you know, we'll work to try and make sure that there's a smooth transition. So I, I, I don't want you thinking that that's just an indefinite period of time that you can, you know, drag this out while it gets to the, to the next hauler. The second and, and really concerning part of where we're at right now is the effects of COVID. And there has to be a conver- conversation on that. Uh, we, we are incurring a million, two, a million and a half dollars worth of extra expense directly related to COVID. And, and that's, that's affecting our company, our service, our people. I mean, we're pushing our trucks and equipment going on nine months, harder than they were designed to be pushed. The city needs to, to address that. Uh, so if, hey, we're going to go out to bid, we still need to address the COVID effect, uh, in, in a subsequent conversation, because it's there. The contract allows for us to bring extraordinary circumstances to you. And it's an extraordinary circumstance that's going to have to be governed and discussed in front of the dais. So this idea that we're just going to continue to pick up all of this extra COVID debris and not have extra compensation for it is, is just, it's flawed. The, the idea of what you could do, and again, you have, uh, uh, your attorney is a very good attorney and, and I'm not an attorney. But I've seen it happen on many contracts that I have. You do not have to go out to bid. You can say, you know what? This agreement is done. We are going to negotiate a new agreement. We're going to waive our procurement. We're going to make a mutually beneficial agreement because we have a good hauler. The, the climate says, don't go out to bid because it's not delivering acceptable bid results. And that is factual based with a lot of factual based results in surrounding communities right around you. And just negotiate a new contract with us without going out to bid.
Well.
The health, safety and welfare on an essential service, when you have factual based bids that have happened in the last six months, that show the detail, gives you plenty of cover to be able to say, it was a good decision for our residents. Now, that doesn't mean that you want to do that. It doesn't mean that you feel comfortable to do that, but that is a potential solution, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mackey. All right. Folks, we have to do something.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Good. Mr. Good.
Speak a little bit here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, uh, this is, um, probably a little bit frustrating for me. Um, I'm, I'm seeing a, a good opportunity going south really fast and disappointing. Um, I, I probably am more frustrated because I don't really know what is the conflict with getting to a solution or to a mutually benefit, beneficial contract arrangement and things of that nature. I, um, I see the attorney is saying that we can't do this and, and, um, and then I also understand that our procurement code does in a way allow us to do this. And I, and I still can't separate myself from the prior item. But, um, but the fact is, is that, um, I will certainly weigh those words very, very carefully, that the attorney has stated that this contract cannot go forward legally. Um, so having said that, for the time being, the only thing that would be legally is possibly the one-year extension. So I want to know, what is the problem with the one-year extension? What is the conflict?
Mr. Mackey?
It, it's the cost. It's the cost. You have the same terms and conditions. You're not only
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I already heard Mr. Mack. I, I'd like to hear the city manager tell me what his position is.
I, I called him. Mr. Man, I'm sorry, Mr. Mackey. City Manager?
Yes, mayor. Uh, the issue, uh, was of course is the cost. It's my understanding that the only way we can legally ex- uh, extend the contract is under the same terms and conditions that you presently have in the contract. When we spoke to Mr. Mackey, uh, and we had conversations, it was originally, I believe, a $3 per month increase in the residential rate and a 2% in the commercial rate. Then I believe it changed to a 5% uh, for the commercial and a dollar 50 for the residential. And Russell, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm trying to do it from memory. I don't have it in front of me, but it wasn't just a one-year extension. It was my understanding that you wanted a five-year extension. So that was the dilemma that was presented to our city attorney's office and I relied upon, uh, what the review of that proposal was. Uh, and, and that's where the issue lies at this point in time. If Waste Pro is willing to continue for the one year, they have expressed their concern. They cannot do that because of COVID, because of other issues. And rightfully, there should be an increase, uh, for a one-year contract. That's something that can be addressed, uh, I guess through the city attorney's office. Uh, and I'm not trying, trying to, uh, throw the city attorney's office under the bus, but I have to rely upon the, their legal interpretation of what we can do and we cannot do.
Mr. Good?
So I, um, I, uh, want to make it clear, was there any negotiations for just the one year extension without having additional time or, um, you know, or additional extensions? Just the one-year extension? Was there a conversation specific to just the one-year extension?
Um, I, I can go back to my notes, but I believe there was the return, the response was they needed a five-year. And I think Russell can address that. There are capital needs that they had. They can only recover those over a longer period of time. I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but perhaps Russell, uh, can respond to that element. But, uh, it was my understanding that a one-year extension was not on the table. If, if that's not the case, then express that and let's go from there. But even with that one year, the contract expires and you would have to rebid it.
So I'm, I'm, I, I appreciate that extra, uh, language there. Um, the attorney has probably made it very clear to us on several occasions and, and I will certainly do a little bit more review on that. Uh, but I want to make it, I just want to ask then again, um, maybe to, uh, Mr. Mackey, uh, is, is that his understanding that there was no conversation about just the one-year extension?
Mr. Mackey?
We, we never submitted a price for just the one-year extension. Uh, there was conversations about capital needing to be replaced. And, uh, the thought would be that a one-year, uh, would look cost prohibitive to the city, uh, you know, for that. So, but we, we never really fully went down that path. Uh, we really stayed towards, um, something that we thought would be in the best interest of the city.
Okay. I, I understand that. Um, I also now want to, uh, because I, I'm sorry, I'm going to stay focused on this one year for just a little bit here, because. gonna stay focused on this one year for just a little bit here because to me, uh, this is very highly critical. Um, it, it, we keep referencing the one-year contract extension would only be allowed at the current terms and conditions or compensation, et cetera, et cetera, so whatever. Um, and I, 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 I can't relate to that. I, I'm, I'm really having an issue with that. And the reason being is because I'm certain this contract has some sort of extraordinary circumstance clause. Is that correct or not?
Mr. Mackey?
Or the attorneys?
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather the attorney give that, that answer.
City attorney?
I've looked, Commissioner Pemay, Mr. Mayor. Um, there's no specific revision regarding extraordinary circumstances. There may be other Waste Pro contracts in the county which may refer to that, but they're not specifically expressly provided for in this agreement.
There's no, there's, so there's no clause in this contract that says, you know, things that are, uh, act of God allows them to, uh, be able to, uh, ask for an increase. For instance, if gasoline all of a sudden went to $10 a gallon, they would not be able to ask for an increase in that would be an act of God.
It's, I, I'm not, in, in the, in the base agreement, there's no such, there's no such provision. There's, there's no force majeure clause specifically in the document either. And this, the original agreement was actually, was actually, uh, approved in, as we said in the memorandum, uh, in May of 2018. Strike that. It was, um, Ju- June of 13 through 18 was the first, first term and extended. So the answer is no. Unless Mr. Mackey would like to look at his own contract, come up with, come up with an answer.
Yeah, if you, if you keep on talking, I'm trying to, so I, I, I know that there's a provision in the contract. I just, uh, I want to give accurate information.
Have law in the past, uh, in a hurricane-type of event, provided additional compensation to Waste Pro for their recovery efforts?
Got a question to, to me or to the manager?
I would probably use the beat to Mr. Mackey or to, to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Thank, thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Good. Could you please repeat that question?
Yes, what is your bank account number?
Excuse me?
Okay. I'm facetious. I'm sorry. I, I asked a question. Uh, what is, you know, has Waste Pro ever been, uh, compensated for hurricane, uh, debris or, um, you know, some recovery effort in the past? Given extra compensation for her, for disaster recovery?
I believe if, uh, with bulk pickup, uh, and again, I have to defer. With bulk pickup for hurricane, there was another vendor, uh, and we were reimbursed or we applied for reimbursement from FEMA. As far as, uh, residential garbage, I'm not aware that they were ever reimbursed for that. But I believe Lisa Chung is on the line and she could address that issue. Uh, Lisa, are you still there?
Court of order, Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, it's almost 11 o'clock. And if we're gonna continue past 11, we're gonna need a motion. Or I'm prepared to move, or I'm prepared to move the question.
No, no.
11:30, Commissioner.
Okay.
11:30.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
So, so I, 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 I understand that I may be asking some questions and it looks like a little bit of additional review needs to be done. I, I will say that for me and all the contracts I've ever seen in my entire life, I've always seen, uh, the ability for some extraordinary circumstance, uh, to be, you know, compensated. I, 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 I'm making it a point because the reason why this one-year extension is important to me, uh, is because, uh, going out to an RFP right now is, is too soon. And that's because, um, I find that the hauling contract and the disposal contract are mutually inclusive. They're not separate from one another. Our rates are currently established today in our hauling contract because it has a disposal component in it. And yes, disposal is going to be an issue. And I think the whole reason why some of the things we were doing is probably trying to time out the, the, the contract, um, expiration for disposal. So what is, what is the disposal contract expiration date?
The, if I may, Mayor? The, uh, disposal expiration date is January of 2022.
And what would be the expiration date of this contract right now?
Uh, well, this contract expires, I believe, June of '21. If you extend it a year, it would be June of 2022. And in fact, if it is extended for a year, we would have to make some modification in that amendment to adjust for whatever the tip fee is, is what gets reimbursed for. So it would have to be on a cost basis. And if we went out for a new RFP, it would have to be addressed in that as well. My concern is if, if a decision isn't made this evening, uh, then we're running the risk that we're not gonna have the 180 days or whatever it is it might be and probably even longer to put together an RFP, bid it, and have someone be able to take over the operation if it is not the same vendor. It would be in the best interest of the city, I believe, if you could extend it for a year. But, uh, I don't know under those terms if what we can legally do and not do based upon the fee increase that, uh, Waste Pro is requesting. And if they would even accept a one-year, I think that's a, a question you would also have to ask them.
Mayor, this, Mayor, this.
Been asked eight times.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sipo.
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking through some, some, uh, some paperwork that I had. Um, and I think Mr. Uh, Mr. Russell, uh, Mackey was trying to find something in the contract. I'm looking at Article 14 of the, um, of the contract. It says, Claims and Dispute Resolution Operations During, During Dispute Cost Savings. And it talks about, um, um, I'll read it. Um, for solid, agreement for solid waste and recycling collection disposal services between the City of Pembroke Pines and Waste Pro of Florida. Please accept this letter as contractor's formal claim to the city for a rate adjustment on the basis of extraordinary changes in the cost of operation due to the recent stay-at-home order placed on the residents and businesses of the city in response to the COVID-19 virus. On March 28, 2020, an amended emergency order was issued by City Mayor Frank Ordus, closing all non-essential commercial businesses and implementing stay-at-home orders for all residents conducting non-essential business. The orders were swiftly implemented and presented operating conditions that cannot be reasonably foreseen by a prudent person. Additionally, the orders resulted in immediate increase of residential waste disposal as volumes dramatically exceeded the current waste generation factor established to predetermine the monthly cost of just disposal generated at all residential units. The financial impact of these increases in residents' waste volumes are reflected in the attached audited statement. So it says, and then per the terms and conditions of Article 14, contractor hereby files this claim in order to resolve the disparity in relation to the extraordinary costs and agrees to provide the city with any additional information as requested by Article 14. So I don't know, um, I would refer that to city attorney. Is that the article in there that, that gives them authority and gives them permission that under these, um, extraordinary terms with specifically talks about COVID-19 and emergency orders allows us to, um, deal with these folks?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, the, the base agreement, which is again, the document that's dated as of March 26 of 2013 incorporates the RFP, um, which was the base document. There may be something in that, in the RFP document. There's no such provision for force majeure or extraordinary services or extraordinary circumstances in the, in the document, uh, unless there's something in the RFP that actually provided for that. Um, and to that extent, that that's, that's why we're having this discussion because it's not specifically or expressly provided for.
Yep.
But what about that?
Point of information.
Okay, hold on. I'm asking a question. With, uh, Commissioner Sipo reading that Article 14, somehow it doesn't jive.
Uh, and it, and it would be, and it would be in the RFP if somebody would bid, Mr. Gomes, or somebody would pull that out. It would be in the RFP.
If Russell Mackey could be recognized as well.
Mr. Mackey?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
No, I, I, and I'm just saying, uh, as your city attorney said, it's the, in, the RFP documents are incorporated, incorporated and as part of the document. So there's a lot in that RFP document that applies to the agreement that we have. So I would also remind the city that the request for, that, that request still has not been dealt with. That's a request that we've submitted to the city and the city has still not taken action on our request for, uh, extraordinary circumstance recovery on COVID, uh, which is, which is out there. So this is, again, there, it's not as clear and cut and dry as, okay, we keep Waste Pro under the same terms and conditions and they transition us out, uh, as long as that takes. There's a very short period on the transition. It's, it's outlined in the agreement. Um, there can be extra charges for that transition period. And then also, uh, we, we have an open COVID request that needs to be addressed by, by the commission. So what, what, the intent of our longer offer was, was to, 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 to clean a lot of these things up and, and, and try to show some benefit for both sides. Um, I, I agree. I, I still stand behind. I, I, I don't believe you have to reference this agreement. I think the city has full right to negotiate a separate agreement without a competitive process because you're in the middle of a pandemic, because of how much data there is out there that's been recent bid. So I, I hate to keep on repeating myself, but I, I think you really need to get the final answer on that. Because if you don't get the final answer on that, then, then we need to just all agree, hey, it goes out to bid and, um, you know, you address our, 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 our circumstance letter for, for COVID relief, uh, in, in a subsequent conversation. And we just, we move on because you, you're going, uh, like a couple of the commissioners have said, you have a very short window to, to go through this process and you need to go through the process. And we want you to have as much time as possible, uh, to go through that process.
Point of information?
What's that?
I have a point of information, question?
All right. And we do have to wrap this up. So, Mr. Casio?
So let's, so let's assume that we had the ability to go out five years. Let's just assume that for the moment. I don't think that exists, but let's assume that. What are we looking at in terms of a renewal, Charlie, if we go out five years with this current vendor?
Mr. Dodge?
I, I don't have that answer. They gave us their proposal. Uh, there's a couple things that we would have to consider. Uh, one is you might want to look at the format of it. Uh, do you want to, uh, continue under the same design of a contract that, uh, they give us a price for collection and disposal and it's a fixed amount and you assume there's so much tonnage? Or do you make a provision that they only give us a price for collection and we have a pass-through for the tip fee, whatever that tip fee might be? Uh, but then there's other complications, uh, as far as. I'm sorry?
It's just too many question marks. I need, I need to know if, if, Russ, if we went out five years from you, what, 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 what's the price tag?
You're asking me?
I'm asking somebody to answer the question.
I, I, that's something we certainly did not analyze in, in detail. Uh, there was a proposal.
What does the proposal say? How much?
Uh, Russell?
Mr. Mackey? But it, it's basically, uh, you know, depending if it goes on the commercial residential, it's about $140,000 a month, but it, it, it doesn't contemplate the, uh, tons staying at the same level of basis that they've been at for Corona. So it's, it's a little bit more complicated to answer than that. But that's, that's something that.
So you're looking about two, so you're looking at about 200, so, so right sizing, right sizing the tonnage, you're looking at about $200,000 a month, give or take?
Uh, I, I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay. This commissioner can't do that. A, a number, a number, a number like that requires a bid. This isn't some marginal frictional number difference from one rate to another. We're talking about, we're talking about lots and lots of money. So I, I, I don't know how to fix this. This is, this is, this is the dilemma that comes when we sort of break from the tradition of how we've done things in the past. And, and, and Russell, I, I'm, I'm gonna ask the city attorney a question, and I ask it with, with great respect in regard for your firm. I know that you know that, if anything, I'm sincere and I mean that. Mr. City Attorney, how many different cities do you represent?
Several. Several at the moment.
Okay. So have you heard of any corridor out there that says, I need to come back to your city and ask you for more money because of COVID? I haven't heard of that.
If I may respond, Mr. Mayor, um, I've seen such a request by this particular vendor in another city as recently as yesterday for the first time.
Okay. So I don't know. I, to me, it's just, this contract was upside down from the day we entered into it. From the day we opened the bid, this thing was upside down. And we've been playing catch-up since then. We've had service issues since then. We've had, uh, price issues since then. It's been a very difficult relationship. And the only glue that's kept it together is the quality of the people over there. Russ has been a, uh, an angel, uh, Ken, always there, so patient, so, but, 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 but it's been a tortured relationship because the numbers never made any sense. So I don't, I, I don't know what else to do now. And
Mr. Dodge?
And I want to acknowledge what the mayor said. That is a real risk. We may go out to bid and, and, and there's, and there's a different number. But it may be the correct number if what folks want is service. All we have is service complaints throughout the city and they're driven by the numbers. It's not, it's not that Waste Pro can't perform. It's that they can't perform at the amount that we've been paying them.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Yes.
Okay. I, I think one issue we have, because this has been dragging on for a little bit, uh, is that we're required to provide 180 days notice. I believe this is probably the last meeting that we are in compliance with that requirement to give Waste Pro the 180-day notice if we're gonna go for an RFP. If we're not going for an RFP and you want to continue to negotiate, fine. But if you can't reach an agreement, then, uh, we're not gonna have that 180-day notification to Waste Pro. And, uh, Mr. Attorney, I don't know how that affects us as far as the requirement in that contract, as far as providing them with 180 days notice.
May I respond, Mayor?
To the city attorney?
I, I think there needs to be mutual, mutual cooperation and mutual agreement as to how you would handle that issue if there were to be a, a deviant deviation from 180 days. I think you're right, Mr. Dodge.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I ask, I may ask the city attorney this question. It hasn't come up. Would we, uh, be able? Would we be able to at least explore the RFP, have the workshop that, as was suggested, and continue to have conversations with Waste Pro during that period of time to see if we can reach some compromise on something for either the extension of the one-year, or whatever the city attorney says is legal, but at the same time meet the legal requirements to begin at least putting together an RFP for anybody to bid on, including Waste Pro?
May I respond, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, the short answer, Mr. Dodge, is yes. The answer is that this is a very transparent public process. As we've said before, waste collection and garbage is one of the five basic services the government provides. Police, fire, water, sewer, and garbage are principal bases of government activity. So it's all out there and notorious. If you were to do a parallel path process where you would ongoingly discuss negotiations and workshop a potential RFP, that would not preclude Waste Pro, if they were to choose to do so, to participate in that process. So you could have a parallel path, to the extent that they would continue to act in good faith, as I'm sure the city would, in the context of trying to find an option or opportunity to work together where possible, where legally possible.
Mr. Mackey? I'm going to cut right to the chase. What Mr. Dodge has said about the 180 days, would you be willing to participate in that kind of an action? That might be an answer for us.
I was just going to say, I think you guys should approve the action tonight to go out to bid. But to simultaneously, just, I mean, the second part of this wouldn't drag out very far, but to find out the legality of negotiating a no-bid contract and having, you know, one more or two more conversations with us to see if there was another viable option. But I think getting the notice out that it goes to bid is really important because there has not been a lot of bidders bidding on contracts. And you're going to want to give a notice as possible.
Okay, I got it. Commissioner Good, we're going to wrap this up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I really, and I do support the longer-term extension in the sense that, again, I'm very, very familiar with this industry. I'm very familiar with the information that's available. I believe that there is definitely competent and substantial evidence that can be presented in order to make this a, you know, to the best interest of the city. But I also want to say, as you do that, I don't know where it's going to go. I can't participate in that. I would like to be more informed about some of the terms that are being thrown back and forth, just so that when I sit up here on the DS, I can be a little bit more informed in the decision I'm going to make. But the most important thing to me is this one-year extension is very, I think is very, very important to this city. We have to line up the, you know, the contract, the hauling contract with the disposal contract. I think it's important to be able to factor in the COVID because COVID has created a substantial, extraordinary impact to this industry, without a doubt. And I'm certain that there is sufficient, again, competent and substantial evidence in order to justify, you know, what an increase for a one-year term would be. I would be more comfortable sitting there and defending that anywhere because it is a real issue in this industry.
All right, well, that being said, maybe we should, as Mr. Mackey said, pass this motion, item 26. Let the parties get together, and maybe there's an answer. I'm at a loss right now as to what to do. But I agree with you, Commissioner Good, about the one-year negotiating. So, Mr., how would the language be, city attorney, if we pass this motion, 26, item 26, but with the caveat that we go back to the parties to try to figure out that 180-day format? How would we word that?
If I may, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, if it be the wish of the commission to respond to the item as proposed by administration for item 26, it would essentially provide for the opening of a bid preparation, going back to the street for waste collection services. You've heard from the current provider, willing to continue discussions, to continue the option hypothetically, even answering an RFP or a bid package if they were to choose to do that. So the parallel path would not be inappropriate. If it gives the administration and the commission and this vendor some additional time to discuss the one-year extension issue, that's certainly a worthy issue. Commissioner Good, you referred to that a moment ago regarding the importance of the one-year term. Just to remind us, again, I'm not trying to belabor the issue, but as Mr. Dodge also mentioned, the term expires, the contract expires on May 31 of 2021. That's literally five months down the road in the context of time. And in government time, it's probably less because of what holidays and what other things are occurring over the next number of weeks. The one-year extension would be, as Mr. Dodge mentioned, beyond, you know, appear beyond that 2021 period. It would be, I'm going to venture this issue on the record only because I think you've all touched upon it to some degree, and perhaps even has Mr. Mackey, but it would be a better defensible position to deal with an extension of a one-year deal than it would be to provide for a five-year no-bid contract. And I say that not in an adverse or pejorative way. I'm suggesting that you may have justifiable bases to, like Commissioner Good mentioned, you know, competent and substantial evidence to support the one-year extension differently than you would for a five-year deal. If the five-year deal and the one-year extension are inextricably tied, and they are unable to be separated, then I think you've got the same issues that our memo refers to.
Mayor Angelo?
Yes.
So as I understand the motion, 180-day notice of termination would issue today, or tomorrow, I suppose, correct?
That's my understanding, correct?
And then there would be notice to reissue, to issue an RFP, and then there would be ongoing discussions with this vendor about a potential simultaneous discussion about a potential one-year extension that he's already said he's not interested in doing?
Under the current terms, if I may respond to the...
Okay, so, 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 a one-year extension may come back to the commission, but it won't be under the conditions that the commission ordered the manager to do in the first place?
I believe that's what the...
Okay, now, the last issue, I'm on board with that. The last issue that I have to discuss, though, is this bulk pickup thing because we're now directing staff to go and write an RFP. The people of this city want two bulk pickups a month. I'm not saying it's everybody, but they're going to need some guidance with us, and we can't kick this can down the road anymore. They're writing an RFP. So I'm very clear, District Four, very few exceptions people want. They're used to the twice-a-month bulk. I've heard it out east. When I knocked on doors there, they want the twice-a-month bulk.
Mayor, can we call the question?
So I want to make sure, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, I was talking. So I want to make sure that we give the staff sufficient guidance as they write their RFP that it includes the right things. So I've heard some, I've heard some different views.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there is going to be a workshop, as suggested, so that RFP will be reviewed by all of you to vote on.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Let's call the question.
All right. All right, call the question, city clerk.
The question, the question is amended?
Yes.
City clerk, calling the question.
Can you read the question, please?
Yes. City clerk, read the question.
As amended.
You need help?
If I can, maybe I could help with it. It would be a motion to authorize the administration to issue a request for proposal for solid waste recycling collection and disposal services related to the current contract expiring on May 31, 2021, and simultaneously negotiating with our current provider, Waste Pro, for a one-year renewal extension.
So moved.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Dodge, you're also including the 180-day notice, correct, in that motion?
Well, it's assumed in there, but we, it is, yes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So moved.
Oh, that is, it's already got a motion.
Yes, it was made by Commissioner Castillo, seconded by Vice Mayor Schwartz.
Right, okay, city clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all, great discussion, thank you, thank you. All right, would you say there's no city manager report?
I will say that, Mayor, that's correct.
City attorney?
I have 138 second item, Mr. Mayor, which I would have brought up sooner, but it's a conflict waiver for Halloween night. You heard on the record this evening, John Aloto appeared on behalf of the ordinance with regard to the electric vehicles. That law firm does certain disclosure, counsel work for the city. You've waived this in the past. She happens to represent Chick-fil-A, and in abundance of caution, made a request literally yesterday, late afternoon, in the evening, for the appropriate conflict waiver, which I don't have an objection to, but I can't waive the conflict, only the commission can. It would be for that one specific purpose. And you know, Mr. Weiner, Michael Weiner actually does...
Can I get a motion?
Yes.
Motion to waive.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Castillo to waive their second by the vice mayor. Call a roll, please.
Thank you both.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Who are we asking the waiver for?
Halloween night, Halloween night, John Aloto, who is...
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes. Thank you all, thank you all for your patience. Good night.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Happy New Year, everyone.